Board meeting Tuesday, May 20th, 2025. Start with the roll call, please.
Steven Deesimo.
Here.
Rupert Friday.
Here.
Thomas Cavallini.
Present.
Dr. O'Neil.
Here.
Mark Brady.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have five members present here at the floor.
Okay, administrative matters chairman announcement. One, I know, one of the things that has come up by a couple of the members is we had asked the town manager to look at a couple of right of ways for safety and we were hoping that that's still in process someplace.
Oh, the right of ways from Dr. O'Neil. Yeah, so he did, he did, and I think.
I think, I know at least one or two of them have been cleaned out mainly because there was some trash in them.
But was this the conversation about opening them up with Dr.?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I can't follow background, I know he spoke with D W, I know he spoke with fire chief on it.
Yeah, I just want to keep a little burner on it, make sure that we're not, not thinking it. I want to thank all of you.
So do we, do we communicate that to him?
She will.
That we discussed it?
Yeah.
I'll, I'll follow up with him. Dr. O'Neil asked where it is, ask him for a response so I can give it back to you next one.
He may be the one person watching, so.
You know what we're talking about, Steve?
I'm not sure.
I don't think I was here when you. I keep forgetting you. I looked at the right of ways, but I don't know which ones you're talking about specifically.
So, yeah, a hundred years ago, when we were developing the north end.
When he was just starting product.
When I was a kid, yeah, when I was a kid here, we were developing those north end and a lot of those developments here have one road.
Yep.
And a hundred houses and whatever in there, and when that road is blocked, there is no access. People say, oh, you know, today you could do helicopter bullshit. The helicopters won't go in. I mean, I know that, we, we work with helicopters at the hospital. You have to, it's a big clearing area, you're trapped. So, what we did, we had options there, we talked to developers, and said, isn't there a way, you know, to have a connection that can be used on an emergency basis? So in some of the areas, we were able to establish that, so there's a place of a right of way, the problem is to maintain it, keep the brush cut down and that type of thing, and also make sure it isn't abused. So that's what we're talking about.
Gotcha. Yeah, I was in myself, put a gate, fire department gets a key.
Yeah, correct.
Then stops traffic so the neighbors don't get mad, but the car, you can get in and out.
Yeah, right.
And that's what we're doing.
All right, I want to, I want to sincerely thank all of you for the work you did on the 14 amendments. In conversations with the, the town council, we committed, committed us, that to continue pursuing this. I mean, a lot of good things came out of this, even though it was handled awkwardly, I think. But one of the things that they're concerned about is efficiencies. And in my research, in Terry's research, former chair, we found that in talking to the building inspector, for example, on efficiency, he handles over 95% of all the stuff that comes in. What comes to us is the complicated stuff. But one of the things I was, we were talking about, and Jill and I have talked about this too, is, yeah, we're efficient, but does everything have to come to us? You know, and we've, we've talked about this casually, about, you know, sheds and decks and things like that. Is there a legal mechanism? And we have to have a legal mechanism, and there needs to be transparency, where maybe, you know, the head of both departments can sign off on something like that and then just report back to us or the town council. So what I'm going to ask all of you to do is casually for now, I'm hoping we'll get some lead time when the council starts to come back with these, but just start a folder and just start looking at things. And, and looking at things as to, can we streamline things? Can we fit, make things more efficient? The goal here is to make things better without throwing out the baby with the water. And so, I'd like to ask you all to do that, and just kind of keep a, just brainstorm for yourself and then we can come together. The other thing last night is Jill and I were at the town council meeting, we requested the town council to decline our mixed use ordinance that we had sent forward, remember way back when? For a lot of reasons. One, you know, transparency has been sitting out there for so long. Two, it is just, it's had so many parents over so many years that it just really becomes untenable to deal with. And we have not only the changes in law over the last couple of years, but we've got stuff coming. So, we wanted to start with a clean slate, so they did. We had conversations with them, they understood why, we explained it outright, and so they have, did decline that, that's going to come back to us and we can start from scratch. Your thoughts on that, about subcommittee or?
We have a subcommittee.
Yep, we have one standing.
We do.
So, and I, I reached out to Councilor Durkin, and if any of you have any knowledge of anybody in town who could assist us, who would actually want to take advantage of this. The goal is, and Councilor, boy, I forget who, I think Ryan, asked, you know, what incentives do we really have? We don't have a lot. I mean, we use FAR, that's about the leverage we've got, but if we can talk to somebody who would look at something like this and they could help us, I don't think it hurts. The goal here, and Jill really is, is the person who gets the credit for this, the idea was, let's make something that is streamlined, is very succinct, that somebody picks up and says, I want to do this, and it makes sense. So, so that's where we're at there, okay?
Mark, excuse me.
Yeah.
Just, I'm just trying to absorb what you just said. Are you suggesting that, that if we focused on somebody who is looking to do something?
No, I think somebody who has, that is in that field.
Yeah.
You know, somebody who would normally, a developer, not all developers would even tackle something like this. And some commercial developers will look at this and say, no, I don't want it. I think it's a special animal that, a special breed that would, would look at this and.
But not someone who's got a specific project in mind?
No, 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 not at all. But somebody who's a tangible resource for us and would be enthusiastic about getting involved. So, those were that. Even though these are chairman's announcements, anybody on the board have something?
How about now we have a semi-expert on it?
Yeah, I was gonna, well, I was gonna ask you quietly, I wasn't gonna put you on the spot, but I don't even know if this is, is something that you.
I don't typically do mixed use, you're right about that, I do residential.
It's a real specialized thing.
It's very specialized, I actually went to the sewer committee last night, and they saw an applicant who is doing mixed use in Bonnet, and they were trying to encourage him to add an affordable element to his development, and he said, like, everyone understands, once you add affordables, the bank doesn't want to give you the money on those, so now you need more units.
Right.
And he's in the sewer district, and you know, how many units do you want on the sewer? So it's, it's a very difficult problem, I, I saw the meeting last night, actually. Great work, you two, four hours and 45 minutes, pretty strong, pretty strong meeting in there, I'm sure you're exhausted. So, you know, I haven't seen what you guys worked on before, but that's a very difficult problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm glad we're taking it on, but I don't have any more expertise on that, because that's difficult.
The, the, the whole thing, my whole take on this is, we all want affordable, I don't know anybody who doesn't. And, and at this point in time, I don't even know if affordable, I think accessible is even, you know, more realistic. But the reality is, and I said it last night, you know, the state comes out with all these regulations and new laws, there is not a word in it that says affordable housing, in any of them. There's no mandates, there's no incentives, there's no nothing. And that's what crushed me, I was.
It's because they've already kind of done it.
I was excited, and there's not really.
Well, the comp permit is, is what they put together for it.
Right, but, but.
There's a lot of incentive.
But, so, but on the other end, on smaller units, on smaller development stuff, basically, even on the state level, what we're doing is saying, here's the problem, developers fix it.
Yeah.
And they're like, great, where's my profit at the end of the day? So the idea with the mixed use here was, can we create a revenue stream that can help at least mitigate some of the things? So, that's what we're looking for, somebody that can come in as a, as a positive resource and, and help us look at this.
So, I'm sorry, there are nonprofit developers who have done mixed use.
Okay.
And I'm familiar with at least one of them, and there may be, I'm sure there are others, Mark. So, looking for somebody who is a for-profit developer doing this stuff may not be the right.
Well, I'm looking for any source, I'm looking for any source at this point in time. Because I think if we can get one of these done, it will open the door to others, where people can say, oh, wait a minute, that makes sense.
So, I, and I think you might be able to get somebody to come for an evening, sit down and chat and bat some things around, I'm not sure about, you know, sustained, sustained up on that, but I think if you look at the nonprofit development community, probably you'll find one or two people that, that know something about this.
So, so the committee is, Jill, Rupert, you're on that committee?
And Doc.
And Doc, so if you can get them any information, if you know any for-profit guys or nonprofit guys, if we can get them the thing. But the idea here is to not make something that requires some PhD in mathematical extraction, figure it out to make it work. Rupert?
Yeah, so I was gonna say, my experience in advocating for this, both in Maryland and with, with commercial operations here, is the barrier is often, the developer can't get funding for, like, the funding for residential comes from a different place than the funding for commercial, and nobody funds them. So mixed use in one building, that's the barrier, that, and insurance, not mixed use, multiple proper, multiple projects on the same property, but within a building, so.
Yeah, insurance is tough.
But if there's a nonprofit doing it, that's.
Well, the other thing too is, maybe, maybe we, we talk to some of the, you know, local banks and talk to them about something, and, and just really, really reach out and try to get ideas from people to really try, I want to try to make this thing work, and if we can.
So, that's an interesting thought, I just, again, totally different thing. We did a project in stores, 160,000 square feet of retail and commercial and 600-plus beds of student housing, and it was.
Is that the one downtown?
It is.
That thing's awesome.
And it was two, and the buildings were condoized, so the bottom was a retail condo, financed, financed separately, and there was a student housing REIT that took upstairs pieces all the way through. So, again, talking to somebody who does the financing end of this thing.
Yeah. That would be good.
Yeah, chatting, that would definitely help.
Yeah.
I know at least one developer who does residential and has some restaurants, so I could reach out to him and say, he's never done together, but, you know, especially for student housing, I, I think that's an easier sell to a financer, if you say, look, we've got a student population that's regular, that spends money, that goes to restaurants, and maybe you could make something, we need to put them somewhere anyway, so.
Maybe URI would entertain something, I don't know, they're having their own.
URI is looking at something.
Right.
I mean, we all have to figure out who needs to spend time with URI so that there is a meaningful relationship that can be relied on to develop the kind of partnership that we need to have.
Yeah.
And, so, put that aside for a minute, they're trying to do something that they say in writing is akin to what was done in the stores.
Yeah, and was done at UNH too, so private, public.
Right, but they specifically say stores.
Oh, they do, okay.
They specifically say stores. So, I, it's getting, getting someone from the town, some one or some people appropriately authorized, working that and several other issues with University of Rhode Island, leave that, I mean, otherwise, we're just.
I'm working on that behind the scenes.
Yeah, but.
See what. Anybody have any announcements or anything on any other topic?
So, Mr. Chairman, just to add to that real quick, there is money, the state has that $120 million bond, we're going to touch probably on that, at least Chris Verelli in a while, on Housing 2030, but one of the things that they are proposing to do is support affordable, affordable housing rental and offer, offer a portion of that money anyway to, to financing.
Would be sweet.
Yeah, the, I mean, the question is small, I, I talked to Secretary Goddard a couple weeks ago about that, and I asked her to define what a small project was, and, you know, a small project to most parts of the state are pretty big for us, but she, she did recognize that and said that, you know, they, they're looking at identifying smaller than what they would consider a small project.
Okay.
Which would be considered a pretty big one, 30, 34 units for us is pretty big.
Yeah.
So just, that's, that's just something to keep in mind, that there, there's potentially a part of money that's tied to this housing.
I think it would be great, mixed use down in Galilee, I think that would be perfect. But anyway, so, all right, anybody have any, any announcements or anything they want to talk to about? But I really wanted to touch base on those two things, and, and thank you guys again for all the work, all your patience, I think good came out of it. I'm, I'm looking at this as very positive, I don't think it is a negative, I think, you know, comments last night from the council were excellent, so, and I've committed to the chair of the town council to open up communications, I think a lot of, we both agree that a lot of the problems stem from a lack of communication and then perception, and so, we're trying to, to beat that, so, all right. So we have, we have two site reviews, but we only have one, so, who do we have?
So we're not going to go through the minutes?
Oh, we're gonna go afterwards, we're just gonna get these.
Oh, the site reviews next.
We're just gonna get these four people up, so. Who do we have, Ryan?
Kaufman, Sixth Blossom Way, it's a three-bedroom house that's looking to legalize two existing bedrooms to make a five-bedroom dwelling.
This is starting to become a.
Yeah, this is.
Do we have an amnesty program, like, you know, if you come in and tell us honestly that you can use in, but this is what, a third or fourth one?
It's our third one in the last.
Third one in the last two months?
Two months.
Yeah.
I guess what's gonna happen.
So, well, at least they're coming forward and we're getting them on the, on the record, so. This is Sixth Blossom Way, it's Tax Assessors Block Q, Lot 92. The applicant has submitted a request to legalize two existing bedrooms, increasing the total number from three to five bedrooms at the above-mentioned property, this property requires, this project requires a special use permit from the development, standard homes exceeding four bedrooms, Section 12.23. Existing condition, Lot 92 is approximately 9,499 square feet in size, is located in our ten zone, district end, is substandard lot of record. Existing 27-by-60 dwelling with a four-by-four front yard, landing with stairs and a 17-by-31 rear patio with landing and stairs and a pervious driveway. Existing billing coverage is approximately 1,662 square feet or 17%. Existing site coverage is approximately 2,174.7, which is approximately 22 square feet, 22%. Proposal, legalize two existing bedrooms, creating a five-bedroom dwelling, proposed billing, lot coverage does not change, proposed site coverage does not change. Project compliance with the mentioned regulations, 6.4. Project will require a special use permit from the development standards for homes exceeding four bedrooms, Section 12.23 of the zoning ordinance, it is served by sewer and water, and the key thing is that the proposed parking areas comply with Section 7.9 of the zoning ordinance, 300 square foot per bedroom, as the project proposes 1,000 square feet of onsite parking and two-car garage for a five-bedroom dwelling. So the future land use designation of this property is residential high to moderate density, the project is proposed, prepares to comply with the land use component of the comprehensive plan. Relief requested, Section 12.23 Development Standards from Homes Exceeding Four Bedrooms, Special Use Permit. Do we have the parties here?
Yes.
Hi, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Can you do me a favor? We gotta kind of be formal at this point, but we're not really formal, can you kind of stand up and then tell us who you are and what your role is?
Sure.
You can go to the podium there, and that way you're close to anything that you want to point at.
So, my name is Susan Kaufman, and I've owned this house for, I think, 15 years. We bought it knowing the second floor was not finished, but framed out, it was, it existed.
Yep.
So, when I went to turn it into a five-bedroom, the person that I hired, the actual contractor from De Stefano, said, oh, it's much easier if you just get the three-bedroom permit, and then we can call one an office, we can call one a den. Partway through the project, I said, no, I want it to be legal.
Thank you.
By the book, I'm not that kind of person, I'm honest to a fault, so I'll shoot myself in the foot by my honesty. So I said, no, please go ahead, what do I need to do to make it legal? He said, you need different windows in the bedrooms, and you need to make sure all the bedrooms have doors, which obviously I was going to do anyway, and you need to expand the driveway, all of which I did, thinking, he said, and we'll deal with the permit later. Fine. So I did the work, he did the work, and I was never the wiser, until, it's a very long story, I bought this house with my ex-husband who thought it was going to save his marriage when, see, this is where my honesty comes out, when he was already sleeping with someone else.
Not in the house at all.
Not, not in this one, not in this.
Of course, thank you.
So anyway, so, for a period of time, I needed to rent it, so I rented it, but I never rented the upstairs to students because it was new, it was beautiful, I had a door that separated it, and I only rented the downstairs. So, when the rental law changed, I went to register as a five-bedroom house, thinking I had a five-bedroom house, and they came back and said, no, you're only permitted for a three-bedroom house. So at that point, I went back and tried, went through this process to try to get it done after the fact, and here I am.
Steph, any comments?
The only comment was, when you look at the site plan, if you don't mind, just go to the site, so, there's an attached garage, currently as it stands, onsite parking is in conformance based on a conversation that I had with the building official, I had clarified with Ms. Kaufman the size of the garage door, and she said it's approximately 18, 18 feet, which the building official confirmed that that is typical for a, a potential two-car garage, however, the site plan, and we didn't have any imagery of the garage to confirm if it's being used as an existing, as existing parking, so the only concern that staff has is if that garage is not used, is not actively empty and used for parking and can accommodate two extra vehicles, then it would no longer conform.
Yeah, that was my question.
So they asked me for pictures, so.
But I think the question is, are those two, is that garage used to park two of the five cars?
Well, I've never had five cars there, I think you can actually park five cars without it, but it is, I mean, it's empty enough that you can park cars in there.
So, so, because this is my, this was my big question, so, where the, where the staff found that parking, proposed parking areas comply with the section, does that include the two-car garage?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would. So, even though it may look like you can fit cars, we have standards as to how much space per car.
Right.
For a lot of reasons.
Right.
So the way this complies is that you have your driveway and your parking area, but you would also have to allow your tenants to use the garage, and they would have to park two cars in that garage.
Correct.
Okay?
Yep.
All right, you understand that?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, that was, that was my big, huge red flag, so, Dr. O'Neil, questions for the show?
Yeah, I have to always add my sarcasm to garages in Rhode Island, you know, they're only occasionally used for cars, most of the time for surfboards and, you know, lawn equipment and, and whatever, so. Our present situation, the present official who makes these decisions feels as long as the garages are empty, they are available, but the reason to be, to try to get enough square footage off the road is, is the obvious, so.
Right.
People are not parking out in the, in the road, that's the reason for, as you said, look at it, your property, I don't think there'd be too much problem parking off the road, but the idea of keeping the garages empty is, I think, to me, that's my gray hair, parking is for this fantasy, you know, in any case. You, but what I would ask you about is your, your other floors, you have this image of up there, but how about the other floors? Do you have images of that?
There should be.
The only four plans that we received were the ones that are up on the.
So that's the upper floor, but what about the main floor?
The main floor, I thought in one of the email that I had, there was a picture of the downstairs, that was the original house, which I didn't change at all.
Yeah, but when we, yeah, you seem like a very reasonable, honest person, but you can, again, hear my sarcasm coming out. We, we'd be, we, I think, if we're making a judgment on how many bedrooms, it would be helpful to see the other levels, you have a basement?
It's an unfinished, like, three-quarter basement.
Three-quarter meaning?
Meaning, I can't, I'm not tall and I can't stand.
Okay, no, that answers the question, so that will make your level's non-livable, but the, the ground level is obviously not up on, on board there, so.
Okay.
Yeah, as I say, you, you seem to be very straightforward, but there, there's always the possibility that there's already five or even six bedrooms.
Well, the, yeah, the concern here is, you were renting this out as a three-bedroom house, correct?
Well, originally, I was renting it out as a two-bedroom house because I only rented the bottom.
Okay, so you only have two bedrooms on the, all right.
Right.
So, these three add make it five, that was our concern.
Right.
Mr. Brady, or Mr. Chairman, if I, if it makes the board any more comfortable as well, she's being theoretically approved for a five-bedroom house, at some point, the building official will have to go inspect the entire house after this is approved, and if there is a four, another bedroom downstairs to make it a six-bedroom, it, it will be noticed.
Well, and it was approved as a three-bedroom with an office and a den, that was approved. So when I did the work, the work, the building inspector came, I wasn't there, I thought it was being approved for the five-bedroom, but it turns out it was approved for the three-bedroom plus the den and the office.
Right.
Which are really the other two bedrooms. There's no space on the first floor to have another bedroom.
Right. The language would have been very strong in terms of the upper level, that the den and the other room not be used as, as bedrooms, because anything that goes through here, that's very clearly stated.
Right, I wasn't involved in the original permit thing.
I know, I know, I know, that's the problem, is you're, you get caught in the, in the after, the afterburner, or what they, I, I think, you know, why, but this person, why don't we, when people are gonna present, show us the whole picture?
The, the building official typically wouldn't require something that's not having work.
I don't care about the building official, don't talk about me to vote on this, I want to see the whole, I want to see the whole layout, and if the basement was a full basement, I'd want to see that, that it's not finished, I mean, we're, 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 we're voting on, on one floor, obviously this is a very honest person, and I believe, but, but you know, we, 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 people, the garage is already two bedrooms, the attic has two bedrooms, and the basement has two bedrooms, we know that, so, we'd like to see, if anybody presents to us, we'd like to see what's there, what we're voting on, you know?
Yeah, I totally agree, Dr. O'Neil, we, sometimes it's, it's a bit of a tug-of-war, give and take, if you will, between the building inspections department, because they're, because we are the, we are just the conduit to you, but we are, we are really carrying the, the application for the zoning and the building officials office.
Those other pages are torn out here, they're already, they're already part of this, this, this pages are torn out, this is from the De Stefano's, when they, when they did the original, original work, they must have had, had images of the, of any.
It does, the applicant has, she has indicated that she's provided it, I don't think staff receives it, so I don't, I don't think there's any nefariousness on the applicant's part, it just wasn't provided, and the staff did speak to the building inspections department, they did ask for the bottom floor, and the response was essentially that not. and the response was essentially that not, they're not coming in for the, for the speciality department, for that portion of the, of the house. And so therefore, it wasn't, it wasn't requested from the Building Inspections Department.
My response to that is, then abstain from voting.
Okay.
Because the, the application isn't complete. In this situation, I believe this, this person, but henceforth, I, and there's, there's no reason that it can't be put up here.
I, I would agree.
To vote on.
Believe me, our department writes those reports. We, we try to get, we often are following up on more information as much as we can. I happily will bring your, the concern of tonight to Wayne and Troy tomorrow.
The wording is, the application is complete. About any conformance of the application here, I don't, in my opinion, is not complete.
So there are two, there, in, in your certificate of completeness, there are two checks. And, and we refer to it as two votes, even though you take one. Your, it's your prerogative, if you'd like to break that up. You want to vote that it's in conformance but not complete, you can do that. And presuming that the majority believes it's complete, the application will move forward.
I think we have an honest proponent here, and, and it's a shame that she's sort of listening to this, but, but I, I believe her. But I, in the future, I'm asking you, please, otherwise I don't feel able to vote on a structure that is proposed to us to have so many bedrooms in it, we don't see the other bedrooms. And as I said, the, there are other parts of the house, not this house, because there's no attic, and the basement's not, not livable. But I'd like to see it before we vote on it. In any case, still be there.
Dr. Ester, who's that? Doc? Who's that?
You could tell.
I was, I was asked-
I just thought you were taking a deep breath. Oh, okay.
I was asked to bring pictures of the garage, which I did. That was the only thing. I mean, I would have brought, I have plans for the first floor, which I would have brought had they asked me to.
This isn't, this isn't about you.
But I do have pictures of the garage, if you want to see them. Because that was what they asked me to bring.
I, I actually snuck around your house, but I-
He does that, we just accept it.
No, I said, what you said, but you, you just sort of underscored what I said. This isn't difficult to get. You already have it. If somebody asked you for it, right, that could be part of what we're looking at.
Mr. O'Neill, staff didn't ask for it. I meant, I made a comment on our e-permitting services, which is the online portal, and I had requested that a lower floor plan be submitted. And in response, I hadn't gotten anything from the applicant at the time, and because the meeting was coming up, I had confirmed with the building official that it was appropriate that the, that this be the, that the floor plan in front of you be the material that's submitted. And he was in agreeance.
All right.
We did ask, we, I typically will try and get the most information that I possibly can to put in front of the board to make the most sound decisions.
All right, thank you, Brian. Rupert?
No.
Tom?
I just need to clarify a few things from your, from your statement. You're not living in the house now, is that correct? I haven't been living in the house for a while now, is that correct?
I've never actually lived in the house. It's my second house, so I spend a lot of time there. And I don't rent it during the school year anymore. I'll rent it for a week or whatever, so that I'm able to use it. That's for the last four years. I retired four years ago.
Congratulations, best job you ever had.
My first job was really great, though. I was an elementary school teacher.
So you do no rentals for the academic year?
I don't do any rentals for the academic year, no.
Can you, which of these two bedrooms are being legalized?
This middle one right here was a den, and the one on the left was the office. This master bedroom is existing.
Do you advertise the availability of the house for rental?
Yes.
And when you advertise it, were you advertising the three bedroom or something larger than that?
Well, originally, when I thought I was permitted for five, I was advertising it as five. But then when I found out it was three, I advertised it as three. But it's complicated because that's not what I don't-
Was it, was it outfitted as three bedrooms? Or was it outfitted?
It was outfitted as bedrooms because I thought I was getting permitted for a five-bedroom house.
So it was outfitted for five bedrooms?
I mean, yes, I added the three bedrooms. It already had two bedrooms.
Right, right. I'm just saying it was outfitted, it was outfitted for-
Right, because I had to change the windows, and I had to change the driveway, and I did that originally and thought I was getting permitted. And it got extra complicated because the contractor who worked for De Stefano died after he finished my work.
Good gentleman.
So, well, we thank you for coming forward and being honest about everything. Tom, anything else?
No, I just, the, the application did not, I think you answered the question. Just wanted to be sure. In your application, the one question that, two questions that didn't answer was number five, how long have you owned premises? And you said 2011, is that correct?
I'd have to look. It might be 2010.
And the number of families for which the building is to be arranged?
The number, sorry.
The number of, the number of families for which the building is to be arranged?
I don't understand the question.
Well, that's probably why you may not have answered it then.
I mean, my, my long-term plan is, when I'm financially more able, is to not rent it at all. That's the goal. But I just haven't gotten there yet.
Okay, now, and I guess my last question is, do you do short-term rentals?
Yes.
Okay, and are you on the state's short-term rental registry?
Yes.
Check your registration. I think you're currently not in conformance. I think your, I think your registration expired in the fall. I'm asking you to ring it. Check your registration.
Hi, ma'am.
Thank you, Tom. Stephen?
All right, I got a couple of things. First, I think I can help Doc. This master bedroom that's existing, this is a bonus room above the garage. So this space here, I don't know why your architect has it with inches instead of feet, but that's above the first floor. It's 526 square feet. There's only two bedrooms down there. It'd be very difficult to get a third bedroom and a kitchen and some kind of living space. But I understand what you're saying about, it would be nice to have the first floor planned. But that's a very small space to squeeze three bedrooms into. So I'm okay there. And as far as Tom's question goes, you did say you have a door here on the stairs? So what he means by how many families is when you have a door that separates living space, if it's lockable, this becomes a two-family home. I don't think that you have a lock on it. I don't think that's your intention. You don't have another kitchen up here, any of that. So I think what he's asking is, is this a single-family home?
Oh, it is a single-family home, absolutely. There's no kitchen. There's, the only reason I kept that door there, that was originally the door to separate the non-finished space from the finished space. The stairway was already there. The reason I kept the door was, like I said, I did lock it. I stored stuff up there, and I rented the house to students when I first had the house by myself, I'll put it that way. When I first separated and had to rent the house, which originally it wasn't bought to rent it, and my goal is not to rent it, but just in the interim.
I don't blame you. Hold on to that house.
Yeah.
So when Wayne goes out, he is going to tell you to get rid of this lock if it's still there.
Okay.
And he can check the windows for us and make sure you have egress in these two rooms.
Which I do.
I'm sure you do. I'm not doubting you at all. And the other thing I had, could you go back to the other plan that's not in here, the original building permit plan for this? There we go. He's also going to ask you to add a smoke detector in this room.
Oh, I think I did.
They probably did, but the, the reason I'm saying it is he has them in the, obviously you need it in a bedroom. This den has a door on it. He has one in the hallway, but this office needs one too, if it's going to be a bedroom. So, and Wayne will tell you all of that. I just wanted to give you a heads up before you get to him.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it does, but if it doesn't.
I'm sure it does. De Stefano built it as a five-bedroom. Even if he didn't permit it right, I'm, I'm sure he added a smoke, especially if he changed the windows, and you spent the money to change the driveway. So I'm okay.
Thanks, great comments. Steph, anything you want to add?
Nope.
Redirect, Doc?
No.
Rupert? Tom?
I'm going to hold for just a second, if you don't mind.
Nope. Steve, I knew you just finished up?
Yeah, I'm good.
I don't have any more questions. I'm going to give Tom a couple of seconds.
Thank you, Steve, for eliminating my concern about the first floor. Absolutely. No, you're right on the, on the money here. There's no room for it.
Kind of disappointing De Stefano. They're, they're more reputable than, than let's make this a den and this a study. That's, that's not them.
Sounds like something fishy, some decent moan, I think.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
I didn't do it at my house. I got four bedrooms, and that's it.
You seem to resemble everyone. I, I guess the last thing, these things, these things are not all some for me. And as I said, I, I just did a quick check, and your short-term rental piece is, is out of, I forgot what the proper word is, but it's listed as inactive right now, in conjunction with the state. There was legislation, I can't figure out what year it was, but it was House Bill 7382, for which you offered testimony. And it says the bill reduces the current limits on renting and provides badly-needed housing for URI students as it hasn't been done for decades. Not having students in town versus local businesses, especially during the calendar year. I just want to be sure. You are not renting to students?
No.
Thank you.
No, because then I couldn't use it. So I rented to students until I retired.
But you weighed in on that legislation? That is, that is you, just, that I just wrote, that just I read.
Did you testify on?
Did you offer testimony on State, on State House Bills H732?
When?
Would have been within the last couple of years.
I wouldn't have said anything about student housing in the last four years.
It says Susan Kaufman, Sixth Blossom Lane.
Yeah, so for lack of an attorney, we're now using a phone here.
Yeah, all right.
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm wondering what the germane-ness is to this because there's no prohibition about renting to students.
No, there's not, but I'm just trying to square the testimony. That's what I'm trying to do to you. There's no, there isn't.
All right.
No, the house is currently empty. And I, like I said, I do short-term rentals. I can have the housekeeper, cleaning service, testify that
No problem.
I do not rent to students in the last four years.
Okay.
All right, ready to move? I am ready to move it. Do I have a motion?
Yep, so move the application before us. Kaufman, Tax Assessor, Flat Q, Lot 92, is complete in conformance with the town comprehensive plan.
Second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion on the recommendation?
Move the application before us. Kaufman, Tax Assessor, Flat Q, Lot 92, positively, with the comments, and you've already read them, comments.
Do you understand these comments that were in this packet?
Recommendations of the staff, correct?
Correct.
With the comments, recommendations of staff dated May 14th, 2025.
So second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And I have one exception. All right. Okay, next up, zoning for her?
Yes, that will be next one. I don't recall the date.
She had to file that herself?
Zoning? She doesn't have to file anything else. She just has to do butter notifications, which Heidi will reach out with that information shortly.
Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the, we're not having the hearing tonight on the Breakwater Village presentations, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
It, it raises a business of 15%. It added on to the, this area is so squeezed to add on, like, the two, we won't use exact numbers, but add on feet of height. Is, is there a reason or, I mean, the idea was not to overwhelm the properties so that, well, for safety reasons, but for visual reasons too. The Breakwater Village Association has to abide by the same 15% that we do?
Yep, they abide by the zoning regulations that the town has set. And also, the 15% also goes back to what was standard in 2023, I believe, in Breakwater Village. It's not, it's not getting any bigger than anything that already exists in that area, if that makes sense.
No, it doesn't to me, but I'm a little slow.
So the, this is a 2024 application?
Yes, this is 2024.
Okay.
Oh, 2025.
All right, so the setbacks, Dr. O'Neill, because the setbacks have actually been decreased by 15%. So if the applicant is looking for, or would, would qualify for a modification of that 15%, they'd be getting back to what those originals, approximately what those original setbacks were. Five-yard side, sideyard setback, for instance, or 24 feet, if it's under 2,000 square feet, 28 feet, I think if it's over 20, 3,000 square feet lot area. So the, the safety component, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but maybe the safety component is what you're thinking about. Is it gets, that 15% will get the applicant or the application back to those pre-2024 levels? So it's not, shouldn't be getting any closer with the, with the modification, with that 15% modification. After that 15%, it would be getting closer, and it would be, it would be a variance with the town regardless.
Okay, I, I just thought we were, because this is a special, really jammed-in development kind of thing. Is, is there a way to keep, try to keep a lid on it if people up at the state level pick a number and say you can expand whatever?
Yeah, that, that's a real thought, Dr. O'Neill, because right now, the modification law says you can go up to, voluntarily, you can go up to 25%. They mandate, they mandated two years ago that municipalities allow administratively up to 15%. The first 5%, no one is even notified, butters aren't even notified. And 5% to 15%, they are notified. So just by way of example, in the last year since this is, since this has taken effect, so January 2024, and I think this was even mentioned last night, there have been 27 applications for modification. 25 of them you never saw. So in a, in a way, if you think about it, that's 25 applications that were streamlined, right? That never came through the planning and zoning process, and that's great. Two of those you did see, and that's because a butters, a butters filed a written complaint with the town. Actually, four of them, I think a butters filed a written complaint, and then two of them were later resolved, and they withdrew their complaint. So only out of those 27, only did two hold their, butters hold their written complaint, and they went through the process. One of them is actually going to be here on Thursday again.
Yeah, not to leap over to what we've gone through with lack of knowledge by our present town council. Because my understanding is that at least some of those members think that like 50% or more of applications for whatever come through the whole process.
No.
Not, not, no, no, no. These people were asked by someone who told me they almost fell over. They thought it was the other way. Had the majority of requests had to go through this whole process, rather than what you just described as a minority. And obviously, usually that's because of excess or some reason that varies somewhat from the, from the rules and regulations that requires the, the process.
Sure. Not to get too far field, Dr. O'Neill, but just super quick numbers. It's actually, in the last five years, it's only been 3% of the total building permits pulled that have had to go. It's actually in the last five years, it's only been 3% of the total building permits pulled that have had to go.
Yeah, Wayne made that point, and but, but the, yeah, the thing that startled me was when asked that question, there were representatives, representatives on the town council didn't know those numbers. And I was thought, thinking, you know, this is like scary. Wouldn't you want to know when somebody says, hey, change all those numbers and stuff there? Because, you know, I had to go through the zoning board, I had to hire an attorney and all that kind of stuff. Yeah, but obviously, those are the people who speak out. The 25 or the, whatever the number is, well, they did nothing to talk about, right?
What, like?
So can I, can I dive in here for a sec? Please?
Yeah, I'm done, go ahead.
No, just, just so, not this past town council meeting, but the one prior. I gave all those stats. You know, I told them explicitly, one, the fact that they were under the impression that the planning board is constantly being sued. I did, I told them I did a Freedom of Information Act search for the last 10 years. We've never been sued in 10 years. We've had four appeals. I'm presuming, I'm just presuming from what they're talking about, that they think all the appeals are coming from developers. Actually, one was from a developer, the other three are from a butters. And I explained to them that they can't change that. People have the right to appeal and to decide. And I explained that to them. I also explained to them statistics that I had gotten from working with Wayne on the amount of permits that go through versus how many actually come to us. And they seemed to be a little bit surprised, but they did listen, and I was very explicit about it. The other thing I did speak to them, and I was very firm about it, I thought it was polite. But the whole notion that the planning board, the staff, do things illegally, and that we aren't compliant with state law, and that we don't file along with state law. And I let them know that basically what they're doing is they're slandering and the reputations, both professional and personal, of everybody who has served on these boards and served on the staff. And I asked them to please think about what they were saying, especially in lieu of the fact that we've never been sued. And typically, we have our own attorney here in this room, and we usually have two or three at least. And if we were doing things illegally, they'd be the first ones to scream. So I think there's some stuff that came out that was good out of this, and I'm taking this as a positive. We'll see where it goes long term, but I think, I think from some of the comments last night that people are thinking on, and they're asking questions, so I think it's good. Yeah, I agree with your interpretation. Steve?
Yeah, I have one thing to add about that.
Again, for lack of an attorney, and I don't mean to cut you off.
No, I'm not going to talk about this application.
Okay.
I'm not going to talk about the application.
No, 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 that's, that's my point. We're too far afield, we're off the agenda. And I don't need to cut you off, we've already, we have, we have minutes to go through, we have other things. At the end, if we want to do it under reports from staff, we could probably find an avenue.
Steve, remind me. Not, not go to this particular proposal, but are we at a stage with, with Breakwater that we need to sit down with their review group and just kind of go through things? Would that be constructive at all, to have a workshop between the two groups, or? No, okay.
I mean, why is it not broken? Why fix it?
The next, next agenda item, approval of minutes. I have approval of minutes C1 through C3, C6, March 24, March 25, April 2nd, April 3rd, April 8th, and April 22nd. These are dealing with the hearings. The fact that you were able to get all of that in such few pages is very, very special.
Now that the video link is an official part of the record, it does make it a little easier.
I agree, I agree.
And I, you know, Rupert is always thoughtful. I am just waiting.
So, so Steve, if you, as you are new, my standard retort is, so Dr. Rupert, you got any corrections? Doc, you want to go first?
No, I didn't see any corrections. I, thank you.
Don't worry, Rupert's got your back.
I have a few tweets. So on March 24.
What page are we on?
First one.
First one. March 24, B1, the first paragraph, the last line of the first paragraph, proposed amendments were sent to the board, and it should be were, W-E-R-E, grouped together?
Were grouped together, yes.
Yeah.
Sorry, my computer doesn't know how to spell the word.
And then I have one on March 25th, page 1, B1, the first bullet, first block of text that begins with J. Sebo. The fourth line down, in the middle it starts, he also noted that the building permits, he sees being, I think it needs to say many of the building permits he sees being bought.
Many of the building permits. And then his dark, yes, thank you, Tom, yeah.
Yeah.
And then, the other one I had.
Which date?
April 22nd. Motion made by Dr. Neal, seconded by T. Callahan, to elect Rupert Friday as Planning Board Secretary. I think I had steeled from that.
Well, I see if you voted no.
I did.
I didn't recall a hearing once, or I?
You voted in favor, did all, everybody vote in favor?
Okay. And then on page 3 of those minutes, C5. And this is where the motion by Tom. In my memory, I thought that you added a condition of deed restriction, not using the room above the garage as a bedroom, and that is not in there, so.
You may agree to that.
Yes. So my memory.
Oh.
Was accurate for a couple weeks.
So it was not taller than the house, and a deed restriction, I'm sorry, and a deed restriction?
Use of, precluding the use of the room above the garage as a bedroom.
Did you say as a bedroom or an ADU? I can't remember.
I have ADU.
I think as an ADU.
When I watched it, he said as a bedroom.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I could really, you know, I thought that.
It was ADU in an earlier conversation, but I think you're right.
But in your motion, I believe it used, it said that it precludes the use of the second story for a bedroom.
And I had both bedroom and ADUs.
It happened, it happened, did a couple of spots.
I added as a garage.
Should I put bedroom and door?
I think it sounds like, it sounds like the tape said bedroom, so.
Okay.
Anything else?
Unless anybody else says?
I just thought in my mind, there was a, there was a fair amount of emphasis given by the board in checking with council multiple times over the course of those hearings about what we were required to do, as well as whether or not anything we were proposing was at variance with what was required by state law. They're not reflected in the minute, to Heidi's point, it is captured in the tapes, but I'm wondering whether or not there should be some specific reference in terms of consulting with council on that matter, and getting advice from council on that matter before we act.
I actually was going to bring that up, not as literary corrections by inclusion. I was a little frustrated the other night with the council where the chair kept insisting that they sent it to us with instructions for us to come back with recommendations. And he kept repeating that, and I don't know that he intended to it, but it struck me, it gave the impression that we were the ones decided not to send back recommendations. And there are lengthy discussions on what we could do and what we couldn't do in it. And we were told that we could not vote on anything, we had, and we could not give recommendations, thumbs up.
I disagree. Respectfully.
Yeah.
I prefer you not put that in there and just go to the tape. Because as I recall, both solicitors did tell you that it was your prerogative, our prerogative as a board, and in fact, our job to give advice. And you pointedly asked the question if we were allowed to do anything other than an up and down on the whole thing, and what he said was, it is your prerogative, but you must also send an up and down on the entire package. So I disagree with your characterization, and it is in fact our job to give advice. So when the town council sends something to us, that's understood and our job. But we can agree to disagree on that.
No, 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 I respect your position.
So, all right, so, so I agree with Steve that, that you should go back and listen to the tape if you can't agree, and the tape's not going to lie. And I do recall, one, if not both attorneys, giving the thumbs up, thumbs down sign. But just for clarification, and this was explained off record to, at least to one or two council members, that the process by which the council gave you the 14 amendments determined the way that you could respond. And no, you couldn't respond with a red line over their red line and making changes and edits and things like that. Had they given it to you, had, like previous councils would give you one, like, like the three student ordinance, some of you were here, some of you weren't, when that one came through. You did offer you a recommendation, I believe that one was, at least one, a couple of the board members didn't want to change from four to three, and there might have been a recommendation to that effect. There was no opportunity in 31 days, as someone calculated, to give a specific recommendation on each one of those hodgepodge of changes. What you did in lieu of that, and we talked about this, was you came up with a consensus of each of those topic areas, so you could give the board a feel of what you were thinking, without getting into the nitty-gritty of each. It was the process by which, if the board, pardon me, if the council, and I believe they'll come back in this respect, wants to have that give and take and have that feedback, it needs to come back as a study or through a work session where you can actually take the document or the feedback and work with that and put something forward and have that conversation. It was the process by which it was given to you, of which precluded you from being able to have any meaningful conditions or recommendations back to them. But I digress to say, you should listen to the tape.
And I'm going to say that we did in fact give them what I think was useful feedback.
I agree.
They could have easily said, we're not going to change the side setbacks. We're, you know, we're going to leave the four bedroom in place.
Mr. Desmona, I think you're going to get agreement here on that.
I think you did a good job reading the report, and I think we did give advice.
I, I agree.
I think.
The process was certainly different.
Well, I think the fact that it took us, and I went back on the tape, and it was literally almost a half an hour between conversations between council, Jill, myself, and mostly council, just to figure out how we could send it back.
Yeah.
And, and I just think, I think it's, it's an understanding by everybody involved that there are better ways to do this, and I think that's what's going to come. I think they're going to have workshops, I think they're, you know, I think it'll be different. And again, we'll look at it as a positive for it.
So for the minutes? Should we do it on the first of the meetings and add a statement that there was extensive dialogue with council about the process and the feedback?
I think, I actually think we should do it, I think the most extensive discussion on that occurred at the first meeting, in terms of what is it that we got, how it was referred, what were the parameters of what we could, how we could respond. So I think that's right, Rupert, and I think also at the last meeting, prior to making, prior to taking the vote, there was a specific, three specific questions that were asked to council about whether or not what we were doing was in conformance with, or out of conformance with what we stayed on and acquired. So I think those two.
The existing regulations, yeah.
I think those two pieces, in terms of adding something on the first meeting, and adding something before we took a vote on the second, before we took a vote at the last meeting, there's something, from my vantage point, will make sense in terms of the reflection.
You guys comfortable with the staff looking at that and coming back to us with something? Everybody? So can we continue this? And allow you the time to take a look at those specific things? Really just concentrate on the first meeting and the last meeting and see if we can ward something that. That respectfully, that's respectful for all people's opinions, okay? All right, you guys comfortable with that?
So can I get a motion to continue?
I move to continue the minutes.
All of them?
All of them.
All of them?
Well, we could, we could.
You want to just, you want to approve the middle ones and just keep holding?
There's a timeframe allowance, as long as we have motions posted, I mean, we're, we're well over. Well, no, we, we can talk about, we can talk about it off-line, but as long as we have a motion to continue again, we're fine with posting.
All right, so you guys comfortable with approving C2, 3, 4, and 5?
Yeah.
Yeah? And then continuing C1 and C6? Things reasonable?
Well, C6 is what they.
Oh, wait a minute.
Continuing March 24.
March 24 and April 6.
Eight.
April 22nd, right? April 27th.
No, he relays.
Sorry.
He relays.
Oh my gosh. So, yes.
Start throwing monkey wrench in there, ish?
No, this is just PTSD. We're all starting to shake again.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, April 22nd was the regular meeting.
Right.
April 8th was the last meeting of the. So you're going to continue C5.
We're going to continue March 24 and April 8.
C1, C5.
Okay, C1, C5.
I move that we continue C2.
C2?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, do I have an approval on March 25th, April 2nd, April 3rd, and April 22nd?
I move that we approve those with the edits discussed tonight.
So you may want to do March 25th and April 2nd, I believe. I don't think Dr. Neal was at April 3rd. Dr. Neal, did you miss April 3rd? Or did you miss April 2nd?
Oh.
She said a minute. I think it was on Thursday.
So on April 3rd.
April 3rd.
So I move, I move we approve the minutes from Tuesday, March 25th, and Wednesday, April 2nd. And with the amendment noted on March 25th.
All those, do I have a second on the motion?
We'll do that in a second.
Do you need a second?
You got it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now do I have a motion on April 3rd?
I move that we approve the minutes, April 3rd, as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody upstanding?
Go.
And I move we approve the minutes of Tuesday, April 22nd, as amended tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right. Take care of that whole department. All right, reports from staff, council, and the board. Liaison updates, coastal access improvement committee. Focus really right now is, and I believe a preliminary report was sent by the chair on comprehensive plan, that's the focus. And from there, developing some benchmarks for the following year and further. We, I told you about CPS project that we've been working on to map out all the coastal access right-ofaways. Trying to predict that because the group that, the state group may be losing federal monies. So there's a little bit of that. I won't know really more until tomorrow night, so it's kind of up in the air still. We have a couple new members, people turned out, so we're getting to know each other, but, yep, that's where we're at. All right, Land Conservancy Trust.
All right, that's me.
That is you.
That's me. So we are going to plant a memorial tree, I don't know if Jill wants to talk about that at all.
Oh, sure.
Right?
Yeah.
No, it's not the peace poll. There's a tree we're planting.
No. Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
Oh, sure, sure, so, so as you, I'm sure you're all aware by now, Matt Callahan, who was an icon in town, he was on our land trust, he was actually our town council, he was our town solicitor for a while. Dead before his board, you know, he's well-known by everyone, passed away a couple of years ago, and the North Kingstown Plenary Commission actually donated, they pooled some money, they donated it to our land trust. Our land trust has turned around and purchased a tree, and they're having a plaque made, and they're going to plant a tree, a memorial tree, in Matt's name. The date right now for planting, unless there's some event happening at the Kenny Bungalow, will be July 17th for the dedication of the tree. And I'll certainly let everyone know.
Please.
When it is, so right now.
Where do they implant the tree?
One more time?
Where?
Um, at Sunset Farm, because Matt was instrumental in helping the town obtain Sunset Farm. But not, kind of closer to the road, not quite in the Kenny Bungalow preservation easement section, but more closer to the road.
What type of tree did they select?
What, you're gonna ask me that? One with leaves.
We, yeah, we got that one.
It has needles. It has leaves.
It was deciduous to not accommodate.
Exactly. I wanna say it's a jewelry tree, but I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
How many of you would like to see Steve with his book underneath looking up?
I don't recall, sorry.
Yeah, I thank you, Jill, 'cause I, it seemed like that it started before the meetings that I got to, so...
It started back in August, or before that, yeah.
It seemed to predate me, and the other thing we're talking about at Kenny Bungalow is erecting an old windmill that they found in the barn there.
Wow.
Was in commission from around nineteen-hundred to maybe nineteen-fifteen. When town water came in, it pumped water to a cistern in the barn, allegedly, that's...
Allegedly, or fountain.
Or fountain, yeah. They're not gonna build a fountain, and they're, they don't think they're gonna have it spinning, so it doesn't make noise. But we're gonna wait till the next meeting, we're gonna talk to, who does the scheduling there, sets up the events? Is that what you're talking about?
Yep, we're Parks and Rec.
We're Parks and Rec, to figure out whether that's a great idea or not, and seems cool.
That's in root.
Remind myself to email Parks and Rec.
The, uh...
A gentle reminder.
You know, the liaison things are, I think, very important, because I think there's stuff that, that, as a planning group, we can help these committees, not just be on them, but we can actually proactively help them. And, and we should be looking for things or talking to them, things about what we can do. And I'd like to see more of us, uh, as liaisons to other committees. That's not our decision, so, uh, but I think that would be key.
Well, I'm haunting the sewer commission now, 'cause I, I wanted to figure out what it's all about anyway, so... I'm sure our engineer was terrified to see me sitting in the back row over here, but I'm trying to get an education.
Actually, I, I have to tell you, I had long conversations with him before we went through because of, you know, what are the ramifications of some of these changes? And he is so elated that somebody is finally thinking about him. You know, he, he said to me, and he was kinda joking, but he wasn't, and we've all been in that seat where you're making decisions, it's like, yeah, this is the right decision today, but thirty years from now, I'm glad I'm not gonna be sitting in that seat. He's like, "I'm sitting in the seat." So, uh, so he's actually very grateful that, that we're, and, and he's grateful of the fact that we have knowledge, that we're not just gobbling things. I know what's going on, it's, we're kinda loosey-goosey.
You are.
It's like having a substitute teacher.
That's what happens with Nick tonight.
Yeah. Not, not that Nick isn't fun, mind you. So, this is the one Jill can't wait to get into, and she's, this is why she's been here tonight. Housing 2030, Rhode Island Department of Housing Plan Discussion and Possible Actions. We can take action on this mess, because I gotta be honest with you. My wife keeps moving it out of bathrooms and things, 'cause I just like have it everywhere trying to read this thing and get through it. War and peace was easier.
So I, I'm just gonna start off, um, I did ask Rupert and I were working, talking collaboratively on it. I did ask Rupert to, to try to get to it as much as he could, because up until last week, we, I was frying other fish, actually until last night, I was frying other fish. So, the, just as an overarching, the Housing 2030 Plan, it's a draft, came out on April 23rd through the Department of Housing, they gave us a thirty-day public comment period. And this plan will be, not, maybe not this iteration of this plan, but a, some iteration of this plan will be used to, um, as a regulatory piece, as part of our, um, housing plan, for our housing plan, for our conference plan, for all municipalities. And so we have the opportunity to comment on it right now. Unfortunately, the comment period closes on Friday, so we, we have had that conversation with the Department of Housing. We have to, possibly Genovale, we're gonna, we'll see. But, so that's where we are, so that's the plan. I did email it out to everyone almost as soon as I received it. Oh, and Rupert and I, um, I sit on the Affordable Housing Trust Collaborative, and Rupert attended as well. So Secretary Goddard, the day that it was, um, yeah, the day that it came out, April 23rd, she actually came to the, um, collaborative meeting and talked about the plan for a little while, which was, it seemed helpful to some of the members of the collaborative, so, so that's where we are. I, I'm gonna, Rupert and I are gonna tag to you, I'm gonna leave it up to him and tell, give us the overarching.
Yeah, so, so I think, um, sort of thirty thousand feet. So this is the housing element for the State Guide Plan, and the State Guide Plan is what the towns use to build our comprehensive plan on, has to be consistent with the State Guide Plan. And, uh, and it has in it, so, sort of key, couple key things. Has in it that we have to update our comprehensive plan housing element by December 2026, which is...
Tomorrow.
Yeah, one year, uh, seems like not adequate time, considering that you have to have, I don't know, two months for public hearings for us and the town council to adopt it. And we also know there's gonna be more legislation, so we're gonna be rewriting more zoning and subdivision stuff in the next couple of months. So anyhow, that was one piece, uh, and I was on a call today with, um, Josh Berry, who I think is a key author of the plan.
He is.
He works, he used to be a planner for Lincoln.
He was.
And he now works for the Department of Housing. And, um, when I raised that, he said, "Well, that's because the state law already exists, that you have to, when they update a State Guide Plan element, you have to update your comprehensive plan in a year." So that's why it says that. But it just seems, uh, I mean, we, we're in the fortunate position of having the Crane Report, where we had this pretty comprehensive affordable housing study done to build off of, where most of the other towns don't have that, so I can't imagine, you know, what they'll be doing next year. I just can't imagine. Now, so the, uh, the other thirty thousand-foot perspectives I have of it, so, in my read, and I've read it, I think, four times now, but, um, it, it's totally focused on housing production. It, it doesn't have anything else related to, um, like, housing safety, housing context, housing rotation, sort of things about neighborhood stability or health, uh, social determinism of health. So it, it's very, um, very narrow-focused, where I think for a housing element or a comprehensive plan, we wanna have broader perspective. And then it creates, uh, municipal housing goals for five years, uh, production goals. And, um, it, it divides the production goals into three categories, and, um, we're in the category of continued growth, which is the lowest, uh, growth rate. And it sets for an arrogance at the housing goal of a hundred and ninety-seven houses in the next five years, with thirty of them being affordable. So...
So, so these are, are new grounds up, these are not knocked-down rebuilds, this is broadland?
Doesn't say, doesn't say any of that. It just...
So it could be.
Could be, could be. And, and so, the other perspectives I have on it, and...
So, hold on, hold on, so, so then, I love these things when they come up. So then, what percentage of the house has to be altered for it to become a new house?
That's a good question.
I mean, you know, because my question is, is a hundred and ninety-seven houses new? I would presume they're looking for new homes, and then how many actual buildable lots do we have? And, and, and again, the market will determine those. My other question, which is rhetorical, and totally rhetorical, is, so I'm presuming there's a lot of apparatuses in here to, to foster the thirty or forty housing?
So that's, that's, I mean, so I, I started writing comments on this as a review, and, um, and sort of overarching comments, uh, I mean, Mike DeLuca used to say, you know, they write this stuff as if the town builds the housing, and, and we don't build the housing. And even, even our housing authority, separate board, the town doesn't, you know, we don't determine what, building permits, Steve brings it into us, so we don't really have control over that. It doesn't talk at all about, um, it, the only thing it has in there about, preventing the loss of, um, it talks about organically affordable, naturally affordable housing, so like, or older housing that's smaller, or even cottages, right, that people own, and it's affordable if you buy it. But there's nothing in there about retaining those, which to me seems like low-hanging fruit, like it's easier to retain our affordable housing, keep it from becoming a mixed mansion versus, uh, building new housing. And, so, there's a lot of things missing.
Yeah, one that came to mind is, you know, you and I were laughing, but we both are agreement, Galilee would be an amazing mixed use. So if you did that, and say you had forty units, is that one house?
No, it's four, it's units.
Oh, so it's, it's not houses, it's units?
It's, it's living units.
It's housing units.
Housing units, okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So anyhow, um, yeah, so I, uh, I guess I feel like we should send a letter to the Housing Department who drafted this, asking for more time. So, and the other thing, my sense is, like, when we did this in Maryland, when we changed the laws, for something like this, we'd have like ninety days, because your planning board meets once a month. Your town council meets once or twice a month. So to have a review and have official comments and then send them up, and we're the ones where the rubber hits the road, so it seems like not getting good feedback from us is crazy.
Jill and Rupert, I know you guys have been, and thank you very much, because we've all looked at this and are happy we're not involved. But is there any chance that we can have some comments to send back by, by Friday? Is that even feasible?
I, I, I think you can, I mean...
And we trust you to, to, to do that, but, I mean, no, no, I don't, I don't mean, I don't mean it that way. I don't mean, I mean, you know, I don't think it needs to be a huge formal, everybody, you know, sits in and goes. I mean, you know, some of the comments we've just made here are strategic and tactical comments that really should be answered by somebody. And, and I'm sure anybody can, you know, anyone who has comments can email them to Jill, but if we can at least get on the record somewhere, you know, with somebody.
So you could do, you, a couple of ways, right? So anyone, anyone individually can comment on it, the public comment period is open, you can, you can write your concerns. Rupert can...
Until Friday, so.
Right. Or possibly Monday, you never know, as they said. But collectively as a board, I did go through this with the town solicitor yesterday, because I was trying to find, your, the planning board's different than, than the other boards out of our office, planning and zoning, well, zoning's different for other reasons, but a lot of our other boards, they, they go directly, and they're advisory strictly to the council, the Conservation Committee, the Harvest Management Committee. If they wanna object to something, they have to go to council, and they do that. They do that through the council, so they'll write a letter of objection, and then it will be set on a council agenda, and then the council weighs it, and then, I've never seen them not go with what, what the letter suggested. But in this case, you're not, it, it's a different capacity, right? So you're not sitting as a recommending body to zoning, you're not sitting as the authority for subdivision, you're not sitting as the recommending body of council. So I couldn't, I was trying to place you in the powers and duties of the planning board where that would fall. There's not enough time to get this as the deadline stands, so what you could do is, um, articulate your concerns, even if it's at thirty thousand feet, articulate your concerns, and, uh, draft that in a letter to the Department of Housing, letting them know that you haven't had the opportunity to get this to council, you are respectfully requesting two more weeks, you know, I think I could jam it on the June 2nd, why not jam one more thing on the June 2nd agenda? And, and then you might be able to get council's feedback, but at the same time, you can CC council, so that way you've gotten your thirty thousand-foot objections heard as a board, you've let them know that you needed, you needed more time, you needed to get it, and you're also letting council know at the same time, because they, um, it's, I think it's gonna be important for council to know what, you know, what your concerns are, and, and the idea that they have had a real opportunity to weigh in for no other reason except it's a thirty-day window, and we couldn't. We got it on April 23rd, which was after your last planning board meeting, and, um, three days before, you know, your next one is three days before the deadline.
And I think important information is, the Housing Department staff, I guess, met with folks here, but didn't meet with staff in the planning department, and didn't meet with the planning board or the zoning board, so...
That, yeah, that is correct. We did internally, I, we met with Department of Housing staff back in July, and I, when I spoke with Department of Housing on Friday, and just said, I, you know, just go follow up what's happening. It turns out there was a meeting with municipal leaders, which did not include, um, anyone of the staff. So, and I was not aware of the meeting until Friday, and that unfortunately was the meeting where they discussed the production goals. But that being said, I did, I did ask Josh today, and he did, um, he did not say no, which is, I said, you know, I'm sure the planning board would be welcoming, you know, to anyone who would want to come in and talk to them about it. So, um, he said he would, he said he would be interested in that, or someone from the department would be interested in that, so I told him I'd mention it tonight, so that, you know, so essentially you could write a letter that, requesting more time, just for the job.
So do we send that to, do we send our comments to you and then formulate it as something from the board? Or is it, is that a little onerous, and, and we send it individually as members of the board?
So I, you can do...
Without getting into a legal quagmire.
There's no legal quagmire. I, I think it's a matter of, you have, you're coming to consensus on something. I did talk to James about this, if you're coming to consensus on a variety of things you're concerned about, X, Y, Z, or A, B, C, you can list those concerns, list them in such a way that you're asking for, "We are concerned, we would like more time, we're CCing the town council to let them know we haven't had enough, we haven't had, there's not enough time to speak to them about this." And so that way you're putting the council on notice, not, not on notice, but you're, you're making them aware of your concerns. But at the same time, you're also, you're also making the deadline, if the deadline is not extended, you are making the deadline, as a board, you're making the deadline. As an individual, you can certainly respond as well. I wouldn't stop you from, I mean, I couldn't and would not want to stop you from responding individually to the public comment period.
Jill, do they have a deadline on their side that they're trying to meet, for which this deadline is tied to?
Uh, I'm sorry, the, the...
Does the Department of Housing, with respect to the plan, the making an official or adoption of the plan, my presumption is, they set a date for public comment, with an understanding that by this particular date, have them chew through the public comment, and make a modification, and they're going to take whatever official action they need to do?
No, they don't have the next date set, Tom, as a matter of fact, that was a question to Josh, which was, when do you, so the next, the next step for them would be to get through all the public comment, make any changes, and then go to the state, which there is another opportunity for public comment at that point. And I don't remember if it was you, Rupert, or Sean Henry, or someone asked him what, what his deadline was, and he basically said July-ish, June, June, July-ish.
Depends on what kind of comments.
Depends on how many comments he gets back and how substantive they are, and what changes they have to make.
And, and he also asked if this is really, um, if the ability there to edit this, if it's gonna be revised. And he sort of said, you know, the comments were meaningful, he says, he has to run them through a bunch of people.
They're gonna have to say that.
Right.
Even if they're not meaningful, they are. So let me ask a, a technical question. Obviously, if we send our comments, Rupert, you've got, you're further down the road, any of it. If we send our comments to him, then we got a, a forum, a ruling forum, type... any of it. If we send our comments to him, then we got a forum, a ruling forum type problem, don't we? Even if we send them individually, we still have.
Yeah. So we can, we can discuss a little bit further the, the issues that Rupert found, the concerns that he might have found. I found some things that you might want to address. If you have anything else. And the only problem with anything else after that is you won't have any, if you define that you have a problem with, you know, if they want to paint all the houses blue, then.
Right. I'd have to do it on my own.
That's Tom's favorite color, then we have a problem. Yeah. So you know what I mean?
He and I talked about this, we're okay with it.
I would recommend, what I would recommend is that you come to consensus on the, on whatever is at 30,000 feet tonight. And then if you have your own comments after, do that.
Jill, do you, or can you, you just about 10 minutes ago went through what I would think were three or four points from your vantage point that you said you could consider following. Do you have those written down? Or did you just take that from the top of your head?
The top of your head scares us.
Let me, let me hear that again.
About the concerns that we, that I pointed out?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I like to start off on a happy note, right? So there are probably some good things about the plan. Rupert made a, made a note that, or he pointed out that there, there is a, there's a multiple approach attempt here. So we are in the lowest category of, you know, continuing.
Expectations.
Right, expectations, right. Because you don't have that and they, they are, they may fall hollow, but there is a, there's some lift service to incentives, which is, which is pretty good. And stakeholder assistance, I thought that was pretty important. I, probably the, one of the first things I noticed was there's, and I did mention this to the department already, which is there appears to be what could be considered inflated production goal because the goal number that they use, that 90, it's on page, and I know you all have it.
97?
I, oh, I printed out the, the goals themselves for you, by the way, but on page 33 of the report, if you, if you have it online, the current housing units that they are predict, they are, they're estimating that the town has is about 9,957. So when you take that number and you use the continued growth math, it comes up to about 197 units, production, production goal of units that we're supposed to, we're responsible to build in the next five years. And of those 197, 30 of them would need to be affordable. So if, the caveat at the bottom of that spreadsheet says housing units per municipality come from the 2020 decennial census and show the total housing units, not just year round units. So Narragansett, like other communities, a few other ones I'm sure we can all name off the top of our heads, has a disproportionately high number of non-year round units. So I referred to it last week as chasing the ghost. We are, we have, we're starting off with a number that's bigger than what our actual number of year round units is. And then, so we're creating a number that's larger. And then every year or every five years, we're going to be creating, if we use that number, we're, and every, of every 10 units that we're building, if only seven of them become year round unit, or three of them or four of them become year round units, we're, we're never going to catch that. It's not, it's not a real number of our year round units down here. We have, we're a different, it's, it's a different world down here. So that would be one of my concerns is that we, we should be using more realistic numbers for year round units. And that's again, this is just me, this is coming from you. So if I, you don't have, if you don't agree, by all means.
So doesn't the Crane Report have a number of year round, in terms of, they've got like three buckets. One is basically year round, one is seasonal or one of them is vacant. Like 30% of the buildings here are vacant. And then there's of that, then there's of what's left, maybe 15 to 20% of them are, or maybe a little bit more, are basically the seasonal, not, they're not year round, they're not year round housing. And so that number then gets down to somewhere in the order of magnitude of what, 6,600? Is that the number?
Yeah. So I didn't use the Crane Report when I did it. What I.
I guess what I'm saying is couldn't you use the Crane Report?
We could.
That framework of the Crane Report to say, look, just had this thing done, we just had this thing done in 2023 or 2024, whenever it was done. And here's the data.
Consider it a new.
And just kind of use the data as the basis for saying in terms of here's the real basis for year round affordable, actually year round housing, Narragansett.
Did the housing department pay for, fund the Crane Report consultants?
Jill?
I'm sorry.
Did the housing department provide the grant for the Crane Report?
I don't recall. That was a few years ago. And it was under, it was under Mike. I don't recall who paid for it. We didn't, I don't believe.
I don't think so either.
No.
So if you look at Crane, so it goes 900, 800, 9,857 housing units. Owner occupied and renter occupied might be in total 6,500. Vacant is 3257. The seasonal units is 28, excuse me, 2601. Seems to me that we're really, in terms of what the bogey is, is the owner occupied and the, the total of the owner occupied and the renter occupied units and not the seasonal or the vacant. And you may work the renter occupied units depending upon what that really means.
Yeah. I mean, that, I think that would be good, count renter occupied, absolutely. I mean, we want, it's not just owner occupied, we want, we want year, we want year round.
Exactly, exactly. So I'm saying the data is there in terms of saying, you know, in the, in the real, in terms of pulling the, you know, what really changes, the numbers of both the seasonal and rentals and the number of units that are vacant year round.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So that's going to, that, that should drive that number to, if you're thinking, what was the number, 150?
197.
197.
Was unreal, was unreal, over five, over five.
126 and 20.
Whether or not, that, that, and it's, it's not like you're making the numbers up. You had that worked on within the last 18 months.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's much better. I mean, again, if the board, I, that's what I mean. So when I looked at it, it felt like they were inflated numbers. We could certainly, and we could, we could even attach the Crane Report.
Exactly.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
And the, and the Crane Report, and another reason for attaching the Crane Report is it does, it will help the state understand the kind of partnerships Narragansett needs from the state going forward. And by the state, we're not just talking about the state department of housing and Rhode Island housing and the rest of it, talking about URI. And there's a whole section in there about partnership, the need for a partnership with URI with respect to dealing with the academic rentals, which is driving just about everything else that's RI and kind of in the market here. So there is a piece in that report on page 46 that talks about supporting community planning efforts centered around housing. The state will work together with universities as they plan for building housing for students. We should expand that thought process in terms of saying we partner with both housing and the state and, and the universities.
And to hitchhike on that, there's no, in the, in the implementation plan, there's no strategy related to that.
That's right. That's right. That's exactly right.
I'm sorry, no strategy related to working with the university?
Yep. What, what, you know, what they reference on page 46 is not then reflected in their implementation plan.
Right. And I don't, and so, I mean, so this is statewide, but, and obviously university around isn't the only school. So they don't have, yeah, I mean.
That's right. But, but again, we're providing feedback from Narragansett, right?
Oh, no, no, absolutely. But, but I think it's a, it's a global comment. It's, we have the local information, but it's a global comment.
Correct.
That you need to be working with all universities. Roger Williams might have the same issue, you know, that, that neighborhood and PC.
Selvee and Bryan.
Yeah.
I know from Brenda Clement that it's been raised as an issue in public council, universities.
So I'm sorry, interrupted. So anyway, what else did you have, Jill?
All right. So Rupert, this is, I'm, I'm kind of drifting from Rupert. Obviously the health, the safety, the open space. I could, I did a, put a word search today. We were online, someone was word searching how many times safety was in the plan. And I said, okay, let me word search open space. Let me words, open space shows up twice, both times as a hindrance to, to affordable housing. And, and that there's no context in character, there's no context about the, the social, the open space, the stability. I don't want to put any words in your mouth, Rupert. I just.
Yeah, sort of safety, location.
Not to be flippant, but we'll be a little flippant. The, the potentially most significant part of open space is state owned. It's a parking lot that never gets used.
Yes.
Across the street from Scarborough Beach.
Which would probably be a great mixed use.
It would. Well, I know about mixed.
Pretty, pretty vulnerable.
Climate change and storms. Try and help some of our retired people leave those smaller houses that are less expensive and could be purchased by families. But there's a lot of, I mean, 126 units in this town is fairly unrealistic. It takes five years to develop five units. It takes however many years to develop 20 units in the north. It's unbelievably difficult.
Right. And I'm not saying it's, but the bogey here is not actual housing. It's permits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right? That's, that's the interesting, what they're counting is permits. They're not counting actual houses built. They're counting what, what you get permanent over that period.
Well, we might get 35 years.
Exactly.
We got 300 last year.
Which is one of our problems.
300 building permits.
Not new units.
Well, but they don't know, but we, that was one of the things I said. They don't define what is 197 units.
It's a fair point.
My, my point is, I said, one of the things that needs to be included is this strictly new bills? Is it raising rebuilds? What percentage of alteration of an existing unit counts towards this 127? And I think those questions should be raised in this letter. And I'm hoping it's included in whatever you send forward.
And we know that, and from waiting, that about half of our permits are from raising and rebuilds. So they're clearly small cottages.
Yeah. Well, they have to be. Cause otherwise you can't go what you want.
Well, the other part of it too is Stephen, you and I talked about this and anybody knows anything about construction, it's cheaper to buy an existing. You don't have to do all the site work. You don't have to worry about DEM and everything's there, you know, right where everything is. It's cheaper, it's faster to get up, you get in and out, it's less costly, more profitable.
You have a sewer connection.
That's important, have a sewer connection.
No, no joke.
No, that's very important. I mean, what I was going to say earlier was we can loop this back in here, is about the building permits and how many people come to us and things like that. So I spent my weekend, this weekend, at a couple of different birthday parties with a bunch of families who live in the town. And here's some of the feedback that I got. Several of the parents in town didn't even bother to apply. They came down, this was before your time, Jill, so I'm not going to throw you under the bus. But they came down, they talked to somebody at the town hall. They said, this is what I want to do. I want to put an addition on this house. I've got three kids. It's a two bedroom house. What do you think? And they were told, now this is obviously, you know, hearsay, they're not here to tell you. They were told, you're not going to get that permit. Now they weren't, it wasn't explained to them that they could attempt variances or anything else. So at least one father didn't even buy a house in town. He's still renting. He had an offer in on a house. He went to talk to the community development department and he was told, you're not going to get the permit. And then later he found out if he had been affluent enough to knock the house down, which he is not, that he would have been able to then expand his house by 50%, get the room he needed and continue to live in Narragansett. So he was furious. There was another father I spoke to, he has a pending application that he's, thinks he's going to withdraw because he wants to build a house that, you know, exceeds far by X amount.
Far.
What's that?
Far by far.
That's, yes, it's far by far by far. And he was like, you know, it counts my basement and, you know, I got kids and I want to put an extra bedroom and I can't do it.
Basements don't count.
Not anymore. This is why, this is why I was going to withdraw. I was going to reapply under, he basically said, all the stuff going through the town council, if the changes go through, I don't have to go to three boards. I can just get my.
Basements haven't counted.
Well, I'm just telling you what he told me. Again, I don't know. I didn't look at his application. I'm not interested in working for him or with him. I just, I didn't even tell these people that I'm on the planning board. I just standing there listening to them gab and they're, they don't come to these meetings. They don't have time. They have families. They're not going to the town council to crawl about. They're not paying attention. You don't accept that?
No, I've been around a long time. I don't accept that. It's all crap. If you want something, you make the time. I had a family, we are all busy people. I don't accept that business. I don't have time.
I'm just reporting what they say.
That's alone. How much do you want? When some, if somebody wants whatever, this room is full. How come? Look how many people are here tonight, right?
The room's always full of retired people. I saw, I saw one, one guy at the town council meetings who works.
Maybe the town council, but our meetings.
That's what I'm talking about.
Some of them are jammed.
I think.
I understand. They should come in and they should do their setting.
I think.
I'm just reporting back what I heard.
If you want something, you create the time to get it done.
I think it's an injustice for somebody to say, we should be enabling not being an obstacle. I think it's, it's an injustice for somebody to kind of say, you can't do that. I mean, that's, you can do anything. Here's how you do it. Here's what you need to do.
I mean, again, I wasn't there. I didn't hear what was said. I'm just reporting what I heard. It was a fly on the wall with a bunch of parents who were, you know, understandably perturbed because they want to do something with their property. Some of them want to buy property here, but they don't want to buy, you know, a tiny unisolated house.
The only thing I want to say about, about that is 39 municipalities in this state, every single one of them has a zoning board. And there's a reason why. This isn't the only town where people try to build, and this isn't just to you, this is to everyone, that, that applying to the zoning board for, applying to the town for a variance to, to build outside of the parameters of the zoning ordinance is so ununique that there's a mechanism for it, that people do it every month in every town, in every city across this country. So this idea that you, if I can't build it by right, I'm not going to. Now, I do apologize whoever, whoever spoke, whoever your friend spoke to at community development, because I've been there.
It wasn't you.
No, it's okay. But I've only been there 13 years. So if, assuming 13 years ago, you were, you know, still in college.
It wasn't 13 years ago, but you'll figure it out.
The mantra is you can ask for, and you can quickly come in and ask for, we'll tell you, I mean, we will tell you, the more, the more relief, the more difficult it gets. But, but that being said, that this idea of zoning boards is not, it's not ununique. I mean, it's so, it's so, it's so ununique that it's all over. It's ubiquitous. It's, it's a system that's been set up by planning for 50, 60 years.
It is, Jill. But some towns you can go, and this is well known with developers also, by the way, which is a reason you're not going to get 126 units. There are some towns you can go and you'll apply and you'll get your subdivision and you won't get the kind of pushback you'll get in this town, which the pushback costs you money, it costs you time, and it discourages people from working here. I myself, before joining this board, have looked at many properties in this town and passed on them because I don't want to fight, A, with my neighbors, because I don't think that's great to poop where you eat. But more importantly, it, it's, the prospect of fighting with the town that I lived in, that I don't want to fight with for years, is not exciting to me. I mean, I had to fight with the town of South Kingsdale on development for, it took four years to get an approval for a subdivision that was by state mandate, you know, going to get permitted one way or the other. And it took forever. And it discouraged me to the point where I don't want to buy another lot in South Kingsdale. So I'm just, I'm just trying to say, if there was a way that we could signal to people that we're on their side, we want things to happen, maybe we could get more building in this town and maybe it could be more building that we want. But you have to signal that to people. And right now what we're putting out is, you're not doing enough, you're, you're ruining the town, you're greedy, you're, you know, and that's not going to get anybody to do anything. And it's certainly not going to get them to work with us. It's going to get them to resent us, which I don't think is constructive. And that's, that's just my input on it.
I think it's great, I think.
Well, I, I guess what I will say on that, Steve, is I think you have to signal to people that you're open. At the end of the day. At the end of the day, every application comes through on its own merits, and there will be factors that come to bear on that, both in terms of what the content of the application is, how much work has been done with abutters, if any, whether abutters feel it's going to be a potential threat to the rest of, so I don't disagree with you, but I, I guess my point is, as a board, we're basically obliged to take the rules as we go and apply the rules as we hope.
Absolutely. Yep, no, I agree.
So back to the agenda now.
So, so, so do you feel like between the two of you, you have something you can set forward by Friday? Just at least get something on the record.
What do you think, Joe? Do you, I feel like the 30,000-foot things we talked about?
Yeah, I think if we put on, if we have that, the production goal issue, the lack of housing context, I have down here, there's, there's no reference to a dedicated stream of funding at the state level. I think that was you, Rupert, and that there's, that there's a lack of, that there's, there's an increasing removal of the lack of local control, where towns know towns best. And, oh, and I have a question. These housing units, can we count ADUs? Did you see it in there anywhere?
It's not clear.
It's not clear?
Oh, actually, no, it is in there. They're actually counting the ADUs.
Excellent.
Or they're, they're calling for them to be built as part of the housing plan. Whether they count them, I don't know. I would guess they would.
Well, I think we should count them, right? And there are a couple of other things.
I think we should count students as affordable.
There are just a couple of other things that are unclear, right? So I, Rupert and I were just talking about this, I mean, like, on page three, where, and I'm going to read from the plan, where it says, municipalities will be free to decide what local policy changes are needed to help them achieve their goals, and will maintain this freedom if they stay on track toward meeting their goals. I don't know what the maintain this freedom if they stay on track toward meeting their goals means. I went and I only got a bite, on page 30, it refers to, sort of refers to.
It's a freedom from a comp, from a comp permit, is what it is.
Yeah.
So what, I've seen that language.
Maintain the freedom?
Sounds like a threat.
Right, that's exactly.
It is a threat. Oh, no, it's a threat, yeah.
What it is, is basically saying you can be, you can be able to continue without the threat of a comp permit.
I don't think it accepts us from comp.
It does.
It doesn't, it doesn't. It's not exempting you, it's saying, but that's what your freedom is. If you keep going, you won't see a comp permit.
But we're, we're going to go for a while, Tom, before, I'm sorry, just kind of, before we see freedom from a comp permit.
I agree.
And so, and this doesn't explicitly say that this is based on the comp permit. It's, it struck me, let's just put it that way. I thought that freedom to maintain, maintain the freedom was an interesting phraseology.
So in five years, well, four years, eight months, if we haven't got 197 units, does that mean the town has to build them?
And, so then, and then on page 30, it says municipalities will be free to decide, local policy changes are needed to help them achieve their goals. So it's, it's, in a couple of locations, take out the removal of your freedom, in a couple of locations, it talks about the freedom of municipalities. And then, and then the next thing we're going to talk about is all of the, all of the housing bills, potential housing bills that remove our freedoms, our way, our local control. So I'm not, I'm not, sometimes these things, it seems like these are almost, you know, designed to meet up with this, and then sometimes it feels like it.
Right-hand.
I'm sorry, and for anyone who's, can't, no one, can't see me, it's the, it's the 2025 legislative session, and there's between 11 and 14 bills that are going to affect municipalities, every subdivision, zoning, permitting, building code, all kinds of fun things.
Excuse me, though.
So to go back to Rupert's question, and Mark, do you guys feel like you've got enough?
Yes. I, I mean, I just listed off four things, right? The inflated numbers of housing context, the lack of funding stream, I have, the zoning is the problem, problem, which history doesn't actually show that zoning is the problem, but I'm sure we can beef that up, and then.
And who?
I'm sorry, Tom. I would like you to include my question. I would like clarity of what 197 units is. Those brand-new raw ground, they raise and rebuilds.
No, 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 I think, I think they're housing units. So, so you could take, you could take one, a really big home, right, in a neighborhood that has really big homes, and turn it from a single family into three units, and I think that would count as two additional units. It's unit creation.
All right.
I mean, that, that would be my read. I don't, I don't, we don't, and some communities don't have the raw land.
Yeah.
North Providence doesn't have the raw land to build the number of units that they're being required to build in this.
I just thought it was specifically vague.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I don't want to, I don't want to shoot you down, Mr. Brady. You want to know, you want a clear definition of?
What counts.
What counts.
And presumably it's net, knocked down and rebuilt is not a net.
I'm presuming it's net.
Right. So let me just play this out a little bit for you. You get this thing, it's ready to go, it's Friday, who's signing this letter?
Chairman of the board.
Okay. So to go back.
He always does.
Go back, go back to something you just mentioned a minute ago, Mark?
Yeah.
Without being cute, I made the point in the discussion that we had around the 14 commandments, that, that we can build affordable housing for students, or we can build affordable housing for families, but we probably can't do both.
Right.
The bogey that they're focused on is the number of units that meet the requirements out there. Another way to look at this thing is to say, what, what's the percentage of population in the census that lives in poverty, in the market party? And Narragansett has 17 or 18%. And so, to be focused exclusively on that bogey that, in terms of the units, which is what the law requires, I think it would be helpful for Narragansett to introduce increasingly, yep, we're providing affordable housing, whether we intend it to or not, it's just not for the people who you think you're, you're building affordable housing for, it's for students who are going to the University of Rhode Island, many of whom are not residents at State or. And to introduce that notion as part of the preface, not necessarily, as part of the preface, oh, by the way, on the issue of affordable housing, if you look at it this way, Narragansett's doing the problem.
Rupert, can you?
Tom, can you give us some text on that?
Can you, can you send some text on that? Because I think that's excellent.
Sure.
I think it's valid. We've had that conversation before, that, you know, students don't get counted towards anything, but, but we're responsible for them. Why shouldn't we? They come for something.
Right. And the reason, and another reason for introducing that idea is it then ties back to the information, the points in the plan with respect to partnering with university and communities.
Yep. Goes back to the Crane report.
So I'll get you something.
Thank you.
Thank you. All righty, so then I had the zoning is the problem, and that was it. So I have, I have five points here. Am I missing? Oh, there's a requirement for annual progress report. That was annoying. That's a meaning, is another report.
Don't add accountability, Steve.
Check it out.
I did, Rupert, I was, I like the reverse incentive, which is if you can't make the goal of affordable housing, they won't give you funding for infrastructure. Wait, what if the infrastructure is the reason why we can't put the affordable, the housing?
When have you been sending that stuff down?
That makes a lot of sense, yeah.
Yeah, and then, hold on, I'm just going through my list here. Oh, the other question I had, and I don't, and I'm going to just write this down, is I wonder if we get credit for things we're already doing? And what I mean by that, because it talks about, and one of these pages talks about, it gives you the laundry list of things that you, that you should be doing, right, in order to, and so if we're, if we're doing, if we're, if we proposed to you we're already doing some of these, of this list, and we're still not meeting our goal, like, at some point, do we, do we get the A for effort? And what I mean by that is, one of the, one of the incentives they put in here is a tax credit for year-round, year-round residence, right? We already do that.
Yeah.
You know, and I didn't get that far, but it might say something like a tax credit for affordable housing, so capitalally affordable. So we already do that. I'm wondering if we get credit for things that were, that the town already does? Just a question.
Yeah, I thought, I thought an interesting part of the, the plan is incentivizing us to be more streamlined, and with all the laws that have been passed in the last few years, there's not much more of this streamlined.
No, I think we, was it, Rupert or Mark, we went from, like, the corporate, the master plan process went from, literally went from six meetings to two at the town and areas, like, you can't, and they're really trying to, we'll get to it the next conversation, they're trying to streamline even more. I mean, I don't know how you go, you cut out four meetings. That was amazing.
And they've figured out that it's streamlined too much, because one of the bills in this year extends from 14 days to 16 days or 18 days for review. It gives you, it gives you a few more days.
It gives you another weekend.
Yeah.
So, all right. So I have those five things, so, or, I'm sorry, six things now. The inflated numbers, the housing context, the funding stream, zoning is the problem, the clear definition, Mark, and are we going to get credit? Is there anything else?
No.
Oh, and as part of the inflated numbers, Tom, you're going to, you're going to give me the U R I, you're going to give me some U R I stats as an over, as a preface, yeah?
Just as a quick aside, Jill, on the issue of infrastructure, the sewer study that's being done by the, by Gerhart's group.
Yes.
Do you have a sense for when that is going to be available?
We had a meeting on this.
I heard somebody say September.
Going back to my Rolodex.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it might be, thank you, it might be September or so. We did, John Gerhart and I met with the consultant, where he was looking for some feedback, and John and I provided him some feedback, so I, I don't think he's given a draft of that feedback yet, that was a couple weeks ago.
So September final product, but draft before that? And then the only reason I'm asking is, before it becomes final, 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 just like Crane or just like something else, there will be data in there that might be useful for people to have an opportunity to get edificated about?
Yeah, no, they, they were only on the first task of it. I didn't, again, I, Mike, I went to work with John, literally the first time John brought me in was last two weeks ago. So let me ask, what was the infrastructure study? Let me just ask of the, when?
I remember where we heard it. And the, in the discussions about the zoning changes, when he was in the meeting, he said, I think, September.
And that's just sewer, it's not water.
Right.
Mm-hmm. I don't think it'll be done by Friday.
You sure?
You mean the infrastructure study?
Yeah.
Or the letter we're talking about.
Or both, or both. All right. Those are the things I had.
Okay. Anybody else have anything to add? Thank you, guys.
So I'm going to, so Tom is going to get me some information, and I know you need to sign it, Mark.
Oh, come in. Just tell me.
No, that's not it.
Can't have two people look at it as the issue.
Yeah, that's the problem.
Can't have three of us look at it.
I can't, so you're going to look at it.
I'm not looking at it, I'm signing it.
I'm not looking at it, also, I'm doing your something.
Yeah, Tom's not looking at it.
I'm just sending you something.
All right.
All right.
So you want, so my recommendation would be for you guys to vote to send the letter.
We're going to send a copy with a copy?
You're going to, you're going to send a letter requesting a time, you're going to send a letter requesting a time extension, laying out your 30,000, your 30,000 issues, inviting them to come talk to you, and CCing town council.
Yeah.
Steve wants to, okay, we need it. Can I, can I amend it? I'd like to send a copy to statewide planning.
Yeah. And we're going to attach the Crane report. I'm not going to remember this.
Reminder.
Like, I've got to remember.
Do we send a cover letter to the town council, just letting you know why we've done this? Just so?
I think, I think this letter will, I think the letter should explain it.
Okay, I just, again, I'm just trying to keep things open with that.
No, that's why you're CCing them.
Yep.
All right, so hold on, so you're asking for the time extension, so we're talking about 30,000-foot explanation, and there's six items, right? Six items, or thereabouts. You are going to request or ask for, ask to, ask for Department of Housing attendance, ask for someone to come to the meeting?
Yeah, that's great.
Yep.
Jill, I was wondering, here's six items, the October, the December 26 deadline.
Thank you.
Being crazy, if they really want to thoughtful.
So Rupert, I'm going to ask, you and I can, we can craft this together, and then we're going to CC town council, we're going to CC statewide planning, and then we're going to attach the Crane report.
I have a little different view on the feasibility with December 26. It just, it's sitting here right now.
Yeah.
It's 18 months out, and you've got the Crane report as a good baseline document.
But it still doesn't address all the other housing elements.
It doesn't, but.
At least we have something.
We've got something substantive to start with, which is pretty robust, and, and just like the town council, when we were initially thinking about, when they dropped this 14 commandments on us, taking 120 days to deal with it. I have to say, from my vantage point, having, complaining about having 18 months to deal with one section of the comprehensive plan, just probably naive, but just seems to be an invitation to be called on responsibility.
So if I, if I could just say two things, by the time we're done, it won't be 18 months, right? And also, I did bring that up with Josh today at Department of Housing, because I was concerned about it, because we, by December of 2026, we should be smacked out in the middle of our comp plan update. And I did, I just posed the question, it seemed irresponsible of us to try to get one element done before the rest of our, like, to update an element of a plan that's on the way of expiring while we're working on a new plan. And the response I got from Josh was, you know, keep contact with us. There's, I think there's, I think you use the word, there's no punitive response. But the fact that we are fully, by December of 26, you know, all, all perfect things aside, right, we're going to be in the throes of an updated plan.
Again, I would simply say, recollect Narragansett as a target-rich environment for problems.
I agree. I think it's a good observation, and I think we can make some headwinds, so. All right.
Maybe I can get that in writing, Tom.
Scratch them.
Certainly worth it, towards the next comp plan, right?
You guys are smiling now, wait until we get into it.
We've got to go to that.
So D3, 2025 legislative update?
Yeah, so I got a vote on that, a motion to send.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I need a motion to send the letter based on conversations and notes taken at the meeting.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Five.
Anybody opposed? Any minutes?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I move, do I have a motion to close the discussion on the 2025 legislative update?
Oh yeah, I'm ready to move on if you are.
Yeah, no problem. Damn, I wanted to try to slide that in, but she just listened.
Oh, I, do you wanna do this now? I mean, this is like, speed of 30,000 feet, and the fact that I forgot, I sent everybody the, the list today, but did not, I failed to print my own list today. So maybe you could, could I ask me to pull that up?
Pull, pull.
On the PowerPoint.
She want, just want a copy?
Yeah, that would be great. Is there an extra copy? I'm sorry, did I, I failed to print my own list today. I, I printed it, it's on the printer, 'cause that's how I roll. I leave things on the printer. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Hey, the fact that.
Oh, oh, this is this one. Oh, this'll work.
That's the one you wanted?
Yeah, this'll work. The one that you, you guys have that I emailed you today, actually.
Yep.
And I'm gonna pull it up here, the one that I sent you today, because I did, I did some updates on, I did some updates today after our legislative meeting. And my email to you today was basically, I'm not gonna print everything out for you because some of this might fall through, and there's no need to print another.
No, Bible?
Bible of information. Right. So, while that's getting pulled up, just as a update, the Royal EPA needs once a month, the Legislative Committee needs once a month, and they go over the bills, we start in January, and then they talk about the housing, all the bills that might be of interest to the EPA, and it's a planners, so it's not just planners, there's a couple of attorneys that sit on it, Rupert is part of that meeting, we have a representative from Locat who comes in, we have some, at least two, possibly five consultants in the field who are working, who are planners, so it's a nice mix of planners who, from different perspectives, who talk about these legislative actions. Every month we meet on it, they provide an agenda, I took that agenda from today, and I augmented it for your review, and that will get pulled up. There it is. And essentially, these are the bills that were covered today. What I did was, I went through, not here, but on the ones underneath, and I went through and told you what the action was, or if there's an action pending. So, without getting into a lot of detail on all of them, these first ones are the ones that were passed, there you go, right there, passed by the House. So that's 5796, which is the multifamily zoning municipalities, these were all recently passed by the House, they haven't been passed by the full General Assembly yet, but they did make it out of the House. The Mackenzie definition of co-living on 5797 sub-A, and then the 98 sub-A is amended, which is single-family dwelling districts with two or units on a lot, that passed in 48. 5800, the mixed-use zoning requires municipalities to have mixed-use zoning, that one got out of the House. And 5794 sub-A, as amended, this one is, it's gonna sound expensive, I think, but it's, I, I would probably consider it this year's Franken bill.
It's a mess.
Because it, there was a term last year about the Franken bill that just had everything thrown into one, and that's, it seems to be this year's bill, because it has subdivision amendments, it has zoning amendments, and I believe this one, 5794, let me just pull that out real quick. So not only does it make changes, pretty, pretty big changes to subdivisions, but is this the one, this is the one.
Steve.
But it also makes changes to our zoning ordinance, and I'm looking to see if this is the one, nope, it's not, we'll get to that one in a minute. So this one got out of the House, but it hasn't, it hasn't got out of the Senate yet.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
I hear ya.
5795, the zoning certificate, that one, so again, it doesn't directly affect us, but that does affect the building official, because he's the one who, in our place, the building official is also the zoning official.
That's the one where they shortened it too much, they're going from 15 to 20 days now.
Yeah.
Right, right, they were like, whoops, trying to correct an error from last year.
In 15 days last year, like, uh-oh, this doesn't work.
But it probably, probably includes weekends.
It does.
Right.
Yeah, of course it does.
Of course.
Oh, okay, so 5799, this is, this is a good one. So 5799, which is, what does it say up there? Creations of substandard lots based on neighborhood character. So neighborhood character-based modification is authorized to grant on any parcel with water and sewer for, so essentially, it's taking a look at the surrounding neighborhood and determining if they, if you meet that character, if you have, kind of like the average front yard setback, which is in our ordinance, but it uses other parameters, and then allows the building official to, or, you know, requires him to issue a permit by right. So that one has gotten out of the House, it hasn't gone further than that at this point, but if you, and I sent this to you, by the way, electronically, because every one of those is a hot link.
Right.
So if you're interested in one or more, by all means, click on it. And if you want a copy of any of them, let me know, I just didn't wanna print all of them, because a lot of, but I, I would recommend 5794 and 5799.
Yeah, you know, sometimes you read, you read some of these, and you're like, they have no idea what they're talking about.
So the 5800, do I have 5800 up there? Oh, I probably had it somewhere else. 5800 was the mixed-use provision, where it's residential development in all or some areas encompassing commercial districts, so it's requirement for mixed-use and commercial. 5801, Low-Lot Income Housing Act, comprehensive permit with a two-tiered system, that one is a, is a big one. And I, this is a sub-A, so I have, I have two pages, I have two sections marked. I'm not gonna, like I said, if you wanna dive down, we can do that maybe next month, but I really suggest looking at these on your own, following along. When I get updates, I can forward them out to you, and then we really can tackle them probably by June, by your June meeting, we'll have a really good idea, but certainly by July. I think last year, last year, the Assembly, I think it was June 24th, it was just after your June meeting that all these data passed, and were signed by the governor, passed, and were just not signed, and then took effect. Alright. And 5804, building code amendments. Oh, 58 sub-A, what is that? Maintains E-permitting for RIDE, DM, C, or MC. So one of the things I didn't mention about this one, about the Housing 2030 is, it talks about, it pays a little lip service to working with state-reliant bodies, but it doesn't require them to do, to get on board with E-permitting.
DEM's already dominant, they're not accepting new permits right now for OWTS, 'cause they're launching their online permitting. I've literally just ran into this. They haven't been accepting paper applications since halfway through April.
Oh, wow.
So, yeah, so it's, they're doing a great job.
Well, you know what would be great, is if everybody was integrated, and then we could see, you know, we could go into that permit, because in the case of a subdivision, for instance, the towns get a bad rap when it's taking forever and ever and ever, but in fact, there's an application, we had one just come through in March, it was literally in, with DEM for over a year.
No, that doesn't surprise me.
It was over a year.
Yeah, they'll drag with me.
So, yeah. Okay, so we scroll down.
Joe, hold on one second.
Yeah.
5794 sub-A as amended?
Yes, it was amended on the floor.
Last, last phrase, if state permits not required until the final phase?
Yes. Yes, so that's one of, that's one of the very scary components of that, and so I, I think it's an attempt to streamline, but the planners have, the planners have written a letter on this, they've, they've submitted objection to this, because it, it puts, it puts, and frankly, it puts developers in a precarious position, because you get all the way through the process, and then you're missing one thing, one, one change to the plan, the DEM changes something, or, you know, you know, whatever it might be, whatever permit you're waiting for, and then you go right back, you go right back to the process, you have to go back to the planning board, or whatever it might be. So it really doesn't behoove, it doesn't appear to behoove to serve anyone, but we're hoping. Yeah.
I mean, the DEM wetland permits, I mean, we have to determine lots are available, right?
Right, that's another point, we, we need that verified edge to determine what the net, what the lot area is for buildability.
From, from a developer's point of view, the nice thing is that you can do both at the same time. Instead of waiting a year for DEM to give you your permit, before you can even come to the town, you can do both at the same time. And then generally.
Both what?
You can apply through the town for whatever you need, and apply at DEM at the same time. So that way, when you get to the end, the DEM permit is just waiting for the town to go, okay, if DEM says okay, then it's okay, then DEM goes, oh, we've been sitting on your application for six months, town says it might be okay, it's okay, then you go back to the town, town says it's okay, and you can go. Rather than going to one or the other first, you can go to both at the same time. I think that's what they're trying to do, that's how it's worked on comprehensive permits for a while now, which is, one of the things, it's like, okay, I mean, it'd be better if either one was faster, but.
So how does it work practically? I mean, you bring a subdivision to us, and you don't have your wetlands delineated.
So you used, well, everybody delineates, they're not delineating your wetlands, I mean, you, you have a wetland biologist who comes in and testifies in front of your board. It's, it's not approved by DEM yet.
So it's still delineated.
But it's delineated, we all know where it is. So, but, and then.
But that's a good example, right? If that number changes, and even if it only changes on a big lot, right? See, if, if the number changes by 4,000 square feet, that could be the difference between a waiver under the subdivision regulations and a variance under UDR.
Yeah.
Which would, which is gonna throw you right back, you know, as opposed to having that verified edge ahead of time. I would think, as a builder, you would do that as a minimum.
Yeah, we always, we always get a verified edge, because otherwise, you don't know what you're working with, but it, to, to wait on DEM forever, to even approach a town is, it just adds too much cost and too much chance. You, you kinda wanna have an idea of what you can do, like, for instance, I'm doing a project in Richmond, I just went and sat with their town planner, what do you guys think I should do here? You know, not every developer is some kind of monster who's maximizing profits. A lot of the time, we look at what the market can bear, what the area can bear, I mean, the comp permit allows like 36 units, I'm trying to do eight. Half-acre lots, it's perfect, it fits in with everything, it used to be half-acre, but everything's been upzoned, so now it's, you know, four acres, it's, so it's the only way to get more housing. And the state forgets, they're the ones that upzoned half of this town when they issued the SAM plan in 86. I mean, my neighborhood was R10, they dumped zone to R80, it wasn't our idea, the state made us do that. So that's the kind of stuff that, that's also, I looked into it, that's why we couldn't extend the sewer line. You can't have a new sewer line in the SAM area, because they want you to recharge the groundwater, because we get our water from wells, and, you know, many other environmental, seemingly contradictory environmental, like, you want the, you want the sewer plant to treat the water, but also now you're putting not saltwater into the ocean, you're desalinating the ocean, when if you put a desalination plant, you could resalinate the water, it's, but they don't wanna do any of those things, it just seems that, they were originally trying to limit development in, you know, wetland areas, places that are delicate, and now they're trying, and they seem to be trying to reverse course, but I don't work at the State House, so.
What I've sat on these conversations, in two of the communities in two different states, and literally had somebody say, well, you probably shouldn't have sewered the whole town. No kidding, you use the central business district and your industrial parks, well, we don't, we're, they were having a water problem, because the water isn't recharging, 'cause you're sending it 30,000 miles away. So, yeah, there's a lot of, oh, oh, this looked good at the time.
Little silos.
Yeah. Yep. Alright.
Alright, so House, House bills heard already by the committee, these were all set down for further study, which, 5958, which is that requirement that mixed-use overlay in every town.
Should we get credit for the fact that we're trying to do mixed-use?
We should wait till we.
Alright, I'm sorry, I shouldn't. She's still staring at me.
5963, which is a subdivision of, oh, 5963, hold on, let me pull this one up. Alrighty, I think this one is, yes. So this one was set down for further study, but this is the oversized lots. So it's three sentences, and it's, it's a jam, jam-packed full of problems in three sentences, right? The purpose of the, of land and rental project involved in residential or mixed-use, an applicant may utilize administrative subdivision processes, processes to request the approval of a proposed subdivision of a lot that is oversized compared to the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant shall be, so right there, administrative subdivision, oversized lots, the applicant shall be entitled to simplify the lot based on the median lot area with, with depth and frontage of direct abutters, or the median dimensions of all parcels in a contiguous block, whichever is less for each individual dimension, so you're using the averages, right? And then, the applicant may rely on a map of a local tax assessor to determine these dimensions, so no requirement for a Class 1 survey. Each city or town shall amend its local ordinance to conform, so 5963, set down for further study, that's, that's a good thing. 6175, the fee and lieu requirements for inclusionary zoning, that was set down, I don't, I don't know why, off the top of my head.
What was, I'm sorry, I didn't look this one up, but what was, what were they trying to deal with as far as fee and lieu? 'Cause one of the things we said in our inclusionary, we didn't want fee and lieu, we wanted the other unit.
It does that, it says you can only do fee and lieu for fractional units.
Okay, alright.
It was a comment from the, from the EPA about raising the, the cost for that fractional unit, so, but it, it's, it got, it was set down for further study, which essentially, which make, which very, very well could mean we won't see it again this year. So if we go on to the Senate bills, a lot of these are companion bills, the ones you just saw, so 504 is, while it's different from 5798, it's, which is amended, and then amended on the floor, that was set down for further study. 505, amends the ADU provisions, that was set down for further study. Trying to find out one that was, so right there with 715, the statewide zoning, which was zoning changes for, for lots, state-owned lots, that was set down for further study, and that's a companion bill. 717 is a companion bill, which we just mentioned, 6175, and then, well, 798 was set down, I'm just reading here, so companion to Bill 6163, that was also set down for further study. So all of these were set down. Two that, that were not set down is Senate Bill 1051. So that 5963, as I just mentioned, let me just get back to it. That's, that was a scary one I just read to you. That is set for hearing and consideration on Thursday, and then the neighborhood character, which is the 5799, I suggest you take a look at, that, and that one, I believe has passed, if you go back to 1052 from above, I think that one passed, right? Let's, I'm sorry, what was the companion bill to it?
1055.
52? No, no, no. Scroll, scroll down.
5799.
5799. Where's 5799? Scroll up, you'll get to 5799. Oh, right there.
There it is.
5799, that's under bills that were heard, so was not set down for further study, it was heard and moved out of the House. So that one is, what was that one again? Go back down, I'm sorry, all the way down. There we go. The neighborhood character bill, the one that I mentioned earlier.
The one where they're gonna let you unmerge previously merged lots.
They're gonna let you use the, yeah, if you're allowed, just like all the lots in, in your neighborhood, yes. Yeah, the neighborhood-based, neighborhood-based character, I think.
I looked at one of those recently. It's an interesting, weird thing.
It's.
Corner lots have thrown it all off anyway, so, it's like, if you gotta, if there's one corner lot in there, it's like, it's not gonna work, but.
So that's, that's a way of coming.
And there's a bill that wasn't on this list that you shared with me last night.
Oh, that's right, I forgot that one.
That was interesting.
Planners.
That was, what was it, 851?
Yeah, Senate Bill 851.
Yeah, thank you Rupert, and that was rental units anywhere, that was the rental units anywhere bill, right?
It, it, yeah, it takes, it prohibits. Um, it, it, um, yeah, it takes, it prohibits towns from managing rentals in any way. Zoning, like, it's about the short term rental ordinance, right?
Right.
And it's like, you know, Newport's doing it through zoning. There's a number of towns that are doing licensing. This, this basically says towns can't do any of that.
Is Senate Bill, um, Robert?
Uh, Senate Bill eight fifty-one.
Eight zero five one, okay. Yes, thank you. That just that came out with the latest, uh, W O C A, the latest cities and towns email yesterday, I think it was.
And, um, this is sponsored by Senator Gallo, who sponsored the bill changing, um, households. Um, basically is initiated by areas of twenty-one hundred last year.
Yeah, a couple of these bills, I ca, I think fifty-seven ninety-four is, uh, sponsored by our, um, our assistant solicitor.
Chair Craven, yeah.
Yes. Yeah, Mr. Craven. I think he's fifty-seven. Let me just double check that one. He's on fifty-seven ninety-four, as well as, uh, Matt Conti is as well. So there are a couple of local sponsors of that. And it has, just, um, for the record, it has amended twice since its original bill. So it's, you know, had a sub A and now has a sub A is amended. So there are some tweaks different to it. The A P A was talking about it today. Nobody loves it, but it's a little bit better than it was. They're, you know, instead of using G I S, I think they're using a K L S compilation survey or something like that, I think that's, this is the bill. Which isn't any better than a nap and drawing, but, well, better than G I S. Better than G I S, but not.
Better than the tax maps.
Better than, oh. Tax maps were done by surveyors. But yes, so, um, take a look at all of those. Every single one has a hot link.
Thanks.
Um, and except I didn't, I apologize, I didn't put eight five one in there, so you might wanna make a note of that and check out eight five one. Um, and if you go to it, uh, if you go on the build text and then you click on it, it will tell you what the latest update is on it. Um, and I can provide that. And again, if you want copies of this, I know this'll, this'll burn out the, the home printer. We can certainly print it for you, but I just didn't wanna print. This is a lot of information. When some of it is, is not, uh, will hopefully fall away. That's the update.
Comments, anything on the updates? Okay, so, uh, our last agenda item, D four, R I D S P, resilience technical assistance program discussion.
Yeah, so in early spring, um, Narragansett as well as ten other coastal communities were, um, encouraged and invited to apply to a resilience technical assistance program, which is um, kind of a spinoff of an already existing program that, um, the Division of Statewide Planning already runs. Um, that's offering free technical assistance to these municipalities or the chosen municipality. Um, for building community resilience through local regulations. Um, essentially what they're gonna be doing is looking at all, all of our municipal plans, regulations, bylaws, uh, whatever it may be. Um, and trying to incorporate, um, resilience planning moving forward. To, um, help the town accommodate the, the changing environment, uh, due to climate change. Um, and we, uh, in, in early April, we submitted an application. Um, and we had heard back that we had been the chosen municipality, so we, we currently have the ability. Thank you. Um, currently, we are, um, working with, um, R I D S P to um, edit their draft scope of work and hopefully getting that in front of, uh, you folks and the town council for hopefully approval. Um, and continue to move forward and that will, they'll have a lot of moving parts. It's an eighteen month, um, project timeframe. Um, it'll have a whole bunch of stakeholders from the town, um, and from state agencies. Um, to hopefully develop some new, um, resilience, uh, resilience, um, uh, regulations for the town to potentially include, um, in, in our regulation. So the overall outcome will, um, the overall result will, uh, be, the consultant will present in front of, uh, numerous commissions, boards, um, in, in public hearings, um, in public meetings, um, with those commissions and boards. Uh, with a possibility for the planning board to recommend, um, any changes that you might see fit.
So we're not mandated to implement their findings?
That's what we are currently working with them to change. And, um, as it reads right now, that's currently what, um, they have written. However, uh, Jill and I had a meeting with them early this week, or early, or early last week to see if they're willing to change that language, seeing as this is, uh, the pilot program um, for this, the coastal town.
Yeah.
Uh, the coastal towns. Um, and they were, they seemed willing, uh, to work with us and that language changed, so we're changing a shall to a may.
So who's the, who's the agent?
Uh, the agent, well, the, the agent is Vision Statewide Planning.
Is it D, oh, statewide planning?
Statewide Planning is sponsoring, um, this program, which it's them and, um, the Infrastructure Bank. Um, the Infrastructure Bank is providing the money. Rallin, um, Division of Statewide Planning is, um, doing all the legwork. They're finding the consultant for the town. Um, they're gonna help manage that whole process. Um, and the town, the only cost to the town is, um, our time. So, once a month, there'll be a, a stakeholder meeting, which will consult everybody and then there'll be other meetings where it'll interest in doing myself or myself and Jill or anybody else who's, um, who needs to be in those meetings.
Nice, congratulations. Sounds interesting.
Yeah, hopefully. Yeah, and, and I figured it, it directly relates to some of those buckets you guys wanted to fill.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So two of the takeaways of that will be that they will have a draft, they will provide you some language as a draft ordinance. They'll provide you language, you know, to, to edit the ordinance as well as the subdivision regulations to incorporate resilience. And that was where the, the shall versus the must, the big must.
Oh, yeah.
Then you must make a recommendation, it's like, whoa, whoa, whoa. You know, if, if the process goes right, then you won't, you won't have to force anybody, then they're going.
Yeah.
You know, the, the planning board will be on board. Yeah, you'll, you'll want to, you, you don't have to force it, so. And I agree.
Yeah.
Cool.
So hopefully we'll get that in front of town council, um, at their next meeting.
Nice. Questions, comments, concerns? Young lady, I've been amiss and I apologize. Do you have anything you wish to bring forth?
No, I'm just gonna say, thank you so much for allowing me to sit in. And I'm learning.
We serve you. This is where it, here, where, we serve you. We're here at your beckoning. Not the other way around.
I really appreciate it. And I'm learning and learning and learning. I didn't always have the opportunity of being present at a lot of things, and so now I do, and I'm making the best of it. Thank you, guys and girls.
Thank you.
I'm Joan Samtarles, by the way.
Well, welcome. You're welcome anytime. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And if, in the future, if I don't call on you, please make sure I do.
I will, thank you.
All right. Uh, staff, anything you wanna add?
I do.
Go for it.
One thing.
Did you retire? Sorry.
Oh, no, no.
Joan lives on my street. I terrorized her living there in college. I'm terrorized as a woman for years. No, it's good to see you.
You too, you too.
Yes, there is one thing.
Please.
I wanted to inform you, I, I attempted to do this a couple of months ago, but I think we ran out of time. Uh, I just wanna inform you, and I'll, I'll come up with a more formal process someday, in a, in a better way, right? But, but right now, there is a subdivision, it's an, it's a minor subdivision that does not need any U D R, does not need any notification at all, but as a, one of the things I'm supposed to be informing you about is the subdivisions that happen. So I just wanna say it out there for the record, that there is a five lot subdivision that's occurring. Um, it has, it has already received a certificate of complete dis- I need to draft the, um, the letter for preliminary approval. It's at the corner of Kingstown Road and Lakewood Drive. There's one, there's one lot right now with one house and there'll be four lots subdivided off of that. So I just wanna let you know that this is from my, and I don't believe Mike did one either. This is the first uh, lot creation subdivision, um, that I'm aware of. I don't think Mike did one. That, because it doesn't need any relief, it, it would have come through the U D R process, which would also have been a first for us. Um, but it doesn't need any relief right now, so it's completely administrative by the administrative officer with no, so no, uh, public hearing process with you folks, you know, the, the notification raised. And not even a minor public meeting process, um, which, what it would have been um, if, if the state law hadn't changed. So the state law changed from five lots, um, before it hit a major subdivision to nine lots. Um, and they removed the, at that time, they removed the requirement for a public, uh, planning board and a, um, a public notification. So I just wanna let you know, we have one going through.
Cool.
Steve, just.
That's cool, yeah.
So, so you know, when this came down, one of the, the only concern we had on it, we thought it was a great idea. The only thing we had is some sort of transparency, so that the public knows what's happening or how do we do this without, you know, dragging the the developer in and having actually spend a night or something. So we're trying to work out an informal way of, of notifying, so that's.
There are the communities, I, I looked at a couple, um, today and yesterday that actually have a button on their webpage that says administrative subdivisions and you can click on it and then see them all. So we, and the town also ironically is looking at, uh, we will be updating our webpage, um, you know, through this calendar year twenty twenty-five. So we'll be incorporating that, um, as well.
We'll get a button?
I would like a button.
Sounds good.
So there's, so there's no notice requirement? No publication requirement?
Nope.
No.
Surrounding neighbors, without an authorized?
Nope. That's interesting.
What, what's the location? Kingstown Road or?
It's at Kingstown Road and Lakewood Drive, so, yeah, so you probably drive by it twice a day.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Yeah, there's a lot that sits back, pretty far back, um, on the, there's a house apartment that sits pretty far back on the lot, and they write on Lakewood Drive, it's, uh, lack of a better description, it's undeveloped, it's trees and whatnot, and, yep, and the, uh, the applicant's able to get four additional lots out of that one lot, uh, each complying with an R ten zone. All fronting on the street, that's to town standards. R ten.
Yeah, those are.
All fronting, uh, each one of those lots, um, fronts, well, actually two lots will have their driveway off of Kingstown Road, cause there's two curb cuts for this one lot now. Uh, but they, the four, the four that are being built will front on Lakewood Drive. Um, they, they need the lot area, there's no environmental, there's no, um, the houses aren't proposed, you know, we don't have footprints yet, but the lots are compli, they're compliant lots, so they should be able to build within their, um, within their setbacks. They shouldn't need any zoning.
Yeah, nice. One twenty-two now. We're getting it.
Like, dog, I'm gonna, but we can't do that.
But that's lots, our building permits, yeah, right?
There, well, I would consider that a housing unit, right? It's a unit.
Well, we're taking credit for it.
Yeah, we'll count it.
Will you be notifying the town council about this? Because obviously we have those fourteen things come this way because it's so difficult to get anything out in town.
It would be, at the, at the appropriate time, I think it would be good to educate them as to.
Counterpoint here.
Maybe when they come, when things come back. I, I, I wouldn't put that on the town manager's update.
No, but.
But when things come back to them for workshopping, for sure. We could talk about the, how the state changes are actually streamlining. It takes a little while for that to, you know, to take effect. If you need to, you know, things are in the pipeline that are already coming through, as you know. You, you watched Clark Road, that was already through the pipeline under, gosh, permit, you know, under regulations three years ago, so, or two years ago, so, um, it takes a little while. Yeah, I don't have any problem mentioning that. I, I, I wouldn't put it on the manager's report.
No, I, I just think at the appropriate time it would be good to let them know that there are alternatives and we are using them. Great.
Well, and I, I guess beyond the value of the message there. One thing that would happen is if it was on the town manager's report, not for the purposes that, that Doc just mentioned, but simply for the purposes of having it again mentioned publicly so that the surprise element is not out there. So I just, I, I just think having been in public, having been on the public side as a developer. The rules of engagement are different in terms of you can get stopped so many more places than you can on the private side because you're so susceptible to public pressure by legislators, by others, that if you're going to be successful, the, the mantra we have is in order to go fast, you have to go slow. In order to go slow, you basically have to talk to people, learn what's going on. So I'd simply say, you know, that you and, and Jim and others may wanna think about at some point in time, how do you ensure not that you're broadcasting it, but you have an appropriate amount of information out there? So uh, you're not susceptible to a surprise. For what it's worth.
Yeah, no, and that, uh, and, and that, Mr. Callahan is, um, has crossed my mind because, because there is no notification. Um, and not just with this application, but with any future application that if I woke up one day and four houses were being built across the street from me where I was looking at woods the day before, I would, I would ask a question, I would wanna know why I wasn't notified.
This was our biggest thing that we wrestled with, and obviously we had no recourse, it was state law. But this is the thing that we were, shook our heads, it's like, there is no transparency to this and, you know, fortunately we have you know, really competent, uh, ethical people, but can you imagine the situation where you don't? And that could get ugly. And so, one of the things we talked about is, okay, rather, without having to drag people in, how do we at least make some sort of transparency and public notification? So we're revolving, but I think that's, I think that's a good point.
It's gonna become more important because what's coming down
Yeah.
is going to nine lots with the road.
Yeah.
And one of these bills, I can't recall which one it is off the top of my head, actually goes from nine lots to as many lots as you could build if it's on a, if it's on a public, if it's on a street approved to town standards.
Yeah.
There was, I don't even say, I think it says, I think it just says on public, on a public street.
Yeah.
So, that's, I'd be hard pressed to find a location in Narragansett, but I'm sure, I already found one in my head. So, um, it's, it's possible.
But, but it's a shock factor.
Yeah.
The neighbors that don't know what's happening.
Yeah, and then they, then they assume and they accuse the town of not protecting their rights and it's like.
I would say the town should inform them that if they don't require any waivers, then it's their property. And they should use it as they wish, as long as it's within the zoning. I mean, to, to come here and extend their time period is just so that the neighbors, the neighbors are gonna know. They cut those trees down, the neighbors are gonna know. They're gonna ask the guy cutting the trees down and he's gonna say, I don't know, there's a subdivision, here's the builder. The builder's gonna say, it's a legal subdivision. That's it. I, I understand everybody wants a ton of notice, but it's not your property. I mean, I'm glad these people get to do what they want and it doesn't need any waivers, it's good. It's good, it's creating housing. I don't know if they have their kids there or what, but.
Yeah, our biggest concern, our biggest concern was. No, it's not, it's not in favor, it's, it's, our biggest concern was the whole ethical part of transparency, of things happening behind closed doors, no, no oversight, no nothing, and, and there is, and I'm not gonna, but no traditional. And all of a sudden, it's just popping up and people are going, whoa, wait a minute, what's going on? So we're trying to.
It must have been connected.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, that's the other part, is, is, well, the builder must, uh, you know, how things, guys are. So it's a matter of how do we, how do we balance this, you know? Uh, we know what the process is that's state mandated, but how do we also do what came with the traditional process?
Well, it's not as if there's not a process for reviewing and making a determination, right? There was, correct, Joe? You made, and I'm not talking about notification, I'm just talking about when this gets done, the creation of these four, it was properly reviewed by staff, it was done administratively, and that's the way it's set up to do. Correct?
Yes, we, internally, we could have a better system, we will have a better, uh, T R C, but yes.
Well, but I'm just saying, that's, I mean.
Yes.
That's not.
We checked all the boxes, yes.
So, so as, as a practical matter, um, the button might work, but as a matter of routine recording of those things that are basically below the stream, but if you just add those to the report on when they occur every month, either here or someplace else, in, in addition to the box, you've basically alerted the people who are responsible for, quote unquote, overseeing planning. in addition to the box, you've basically alerted the people who are responsible for, quote-unquote, overseeing planning and planning in the town that something's up there. Because the flip side is, if we don't know, somebody asks us or something, you know?
We look stupid.
Yeah. Certainly like that, I mean, I, no objection to it being on the, a button, being a town council, I mean, if any of that is fine. I mean, it's just the requirement to notify people by, I don't know, occasionally, no, no, I know, there isn't now. But that's what it used to be, and I don't know if you've sent those notices, but...
This would not have required a notification. This would, but, see, this wouldn't actually have required a notification, because it was only, it was five lots, and it met all the town's standards, so it would've just been a public meeting. You got, you would've decided, the board would've decided. It wouldn't have been a public hearing, only a public hearing if you needed relief. I mean, if it didn't meet one of the standards, yeah, if it didn't meet one of the standards, yeah.
You just said it met all of them. So, if we can't say no, then why, why come, I know, because transparency. But it just costs money and time to come in and sit here and say, hey, guys, this is what I wanna do with my property, can I please?
Well, I don't think that's what... That's not what we're asking, we're trying to figure in-house, how do we, how do we notify, how do we do this?
No, I totally agree, but Jill just said that it, previously, there wouldn't have been a notice, but it would've come to us, I don't...
Right, but there are certain things that have to be, so not just, it's not just zoning.
But five lot used to be a major, right?
Six lots a major.
I've had a lot of towns tell me that five lots are a major.
When you, when you need...
You know, I agree that it shouldn't be a major, but they treat it as a major.
Relief from every single one of those, why do you not? You've gotten relief, you've needed relief.
I had to go to a major.
But you needed relief.
So, I had to notice, I had to do what I should have done.
But you needed relief, you needed some, you needed relief from the ordinance, or you needed a waiver.
I'd have to look back, I'll be honest with you, I don't, I don't think I needed, I don't think I needed relief, but...
Well, for the last two, you did, you did. Matunik, Matunik, you needed relief.
Oh, that's different, that's a comprehensive permit, that requires notice. That's, that wasn't five units either. That was, it started as 20, and I'll be honest with you, I think it was a better plan at 20, with five affordables. There were shorter buildings, they were, they would've been less expensive. I thought it was a better plan, but I got a lot of pushback on that plan, and instead, you've got 34-foot-tall buildings, which nobody wanted. I didn't want, I was trying to keep them at 27, and they got significantly more expensive, so, you know. And there were less affordable units, but that's in South Kingstown, that's not here.
Five lots, up to nine lots are minor, you don't need any relief, if you're not asking for any waivers, and you don't need any, you don't need relief.
Yeah, we got new rules.
But just giving a heads up, a meeting just like this, Jill, I mean, in terms of, and then maybe doing the button thing?
Yeah, I'm definitely gonna do the button thing.
Provides a venue.
Can it make a noise?
I'm sorry?
Can it make a noise?
If she wants it to, it provides a venue and some cover if you need it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, I agree, it's good for the town, it's good for the developer too, because you get less questions later.
Right.
From my experience, it doesn't matter how many questions you answer in the front, you're gonna get them in the back too, so.
One thing I can recommend is, I don't think the townspeople really understand what you do. And so, you, I was at the meeting on Monday, and you spoke, and I don't think, as I just mentioned and just said, I don't think the people really understand exactly what you do. And so, I would say maybe at each town council, if, meeting, if you could speak up and just say, in actuality, teach the people what you're all about, I think that would go a long way.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. So, we come to that moment where I say, Steph, do you have anything to add?
No.
That's definitive. Doc? Rupert? Tom?
I'm good.
Steve?
Nah, I said enough.
Well, wait a minute, Steve, you were going to say something earlier in the meeting?
I did bring it up during the...
Okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure.
Appreciate it.
Alright, now my favorite question, do I have motion? Close the... Did you have something you wanted?
No, I just, I went...
No, 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 no.
Move the book.
Okay.
Move the table.
Move the table? Do I have a second? Third? Non-debatable?
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Non-debatable, all who's in favor?
Aye. That wasn't too much fun, anyway.